And I think they were running that down by the nameless. But if they're going to do the same thing, it could ruin the whole side. For long ways.
We'll see.
You know, this month could make a huge difference.
Yeah, it might. Will it be done here in the next week or two?
Did I hear you say the project will be done?
For the most part. Just a few odds and ends.
Money.
Well, I mean besides that. They're not really done, but I said they're done. We've still got a few things out there.
Well, we're in HD.
Hot in your eyes? HD, hot in your eye?
Uh huh.
I call this meeting to order? Mr. Colton's back again. Would you like to lead us in a prayer?
Yes. Dear the Father, we thank you for this day that you have given us and allowed us to be here tonight. Lord, we thank you for the city officials here, our leaders here. And Lord, as they come together tonight, Lord, we ask that you will just give them guidance, you will give them direction, you will give them vision for our community here in our city. And, uh, Lord, we just ask that, uh, that everything be done here decently in order and in order for the betterment of our city. And Lord, we just thank you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance.
To the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That picture looks good.
June 13th, 2016, Lord of Alderman met in regular session with Mayor Hewnall presiding. Alderman present Rene Edwards, Rick Winter, Doc Krickser, Delmar Strange, Ryan Mason, absent Ron Stansberry. Mayor Hewnall called the meeting to order. The invocation was given by Clay Talton, pastor of the Life of Christ Church. The pledge of allegiance was led by Ryan Mason. Minutes of the May 9th and May 24th meetings were read and approved. Collectors and treasurer reports were given. Peggy Collinge, City Treasurer, met with the board. She said Wade Stables, PC, recently completed the city's 2015 audit. Peggy reviewed the audit with the board and noted that there was only one finding, which is a normal one for small businesses, the lack of segregation of duties. Motion was made by Rene Edwards and seconded by Doc Krickser to pay all bills as presented. Motion carried. Clay Talton, pastor of the Life of Christ Church, met with the board. He wanted to confirm that the father-son campout could still be held at the Edina Country Club. At this time, the board reviewed a letter from John Bodie, president of the Knox County Community Development Corporation dated June 12th, 2016. Bodie stated that their board voted unanimously to cease with any further repairs to the city lake buildings, to stop with all efforts to administer the use of the buildings, and recognizing that the city of Edina is the owner of such properties, relinquish all rights and deeds to the buildings. With this information, there was a consensus to leave as is for now and allow the father-son campout to continue as planned. C.E. McCarty addressed the board and requested a stop sign be installed on Shoemate where it intersects with Broadway. The board agreed that they would address this at the July meeting. Jeff Doss met with the board. He said he was representing a group of individuals that are interested in developing a recreation area on the city property around the lake. He suggested this area would be a good location for ball fields, a camping area, pool, and walking trail. Doss said a county sales tax has been a suggestion to maintain this type of recreation area. The board agreed that they are interested in developing this area, but they want to consider all options. Mayor Hewnall said the names of the board members and a more detailed plan would be needed before the city could lease this property. Department reports. Ty Parish, utility supervisor, met with the board. Ty reported the routine activities completed by his crew during the last month. At the board's request, he agreed to replace the swing chains at Miller Park, add more chips to the motory playground area, and make sure the park restroom is cleaned every day. Mike Wright, wastewater superintendent, met with the board. He said a service agreement will be needed for the new SCADA system. Motion was made by Rick Winter and seconded by Doc Krickser to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with I Control Solutions for the SCADA service agreement. Motion carried. This is a three-year contract with a quarterly fee of $105. Officer Robert Becker reported that the police department is continuing to contact owners of derelict vehicles and enforcing the ordinance regarding tall weeds and grass. Mark Ross, cleaner and associates, did not attend the meeting but sent a written report updating the board on the sewer project. Board reviewed an application for a building permit submitted by Doug and Linda Kerr to build a one-car garage on the north side of their house at 401 Northeast Avenue. Motion was made by Rick Winter and seconded by Rene Edwards to approve this permit. Motion carried. Under Alderman comments, numerous topics were discussed, but no action being taken. Motion was made by Doc Krickser and seconded by Rene Edwards to adjourn. Motion carried and the meeting adjourned at 9:35. Any conditions or corrections?
Collectors report.
I have the collections for June 2016. Water total, $23,418.06. Sewer total, $24,273.71. Sanitation total, $14,073.37. General fund total, $6,707.24. Recreation total, $306.18. Street total, $3,895.86. Special lights total, $67.33. Meter deposit total, $1,410. Reserve and improvement fund total, zero with a grand total. Collected, $74,151.75. As for shut-offs this month, we had one, but they've already moved out of town and the deposit covered what we had owed to us, so we're good.
I admit them also, I don't, I can't really see them.
Alrighty.
Can we go back to it? Get them apart?
We'll look at them.
Three of them stood?
You did too.
Have they jumped out? They jumped out? Yeah, it's on the last one stacked there. It's insane, women library. We'll move on to citizens' comments for the moment. Citizens' comments, if there's any.
I would just like to, uh, address the board tonight. Last month at your meeting was my wife's birthday, and I had plans to take her out, and I had a letter that needed to be delivered, and I couldn't be at both places at one time. My wife won out, so...
Rightly so.
I have heard some comments, and some people took it the way that we were just kind of taking our balls and going home, uh, with, uh, with what we were, had said in, in the letter concerning the lake property. Back when we, uh, when the country club was dissolving, one of the issues they had was any assets that they had left, when they dissolved, they would have to go to all the old existing members and offer them an equal settlement, uh, on dividing all the assets. So the one thing they could not have was assets left over. And so they had some bills, and so we totaled up the bills, and so Community Development Corporation gave them, uh, the money that would satisfy their debts, and in exchange, they signed over all the assets that they had to us at that time. And it was just simply a way of clearing their books, okay? Community Development never had any, any plans to do any major development or anything like that. What we looked at was, and we have always considered, the one big, uh, major area that the city has for, uh, development down the road is really the lake. And so we just wanted to make sure those, those buildings didn't deteriorate. And so when we got the country club, uh, clubhouse, it needed a new roof. We put a new roof on it, the back, the back patio was falling off, and so we put a new, new second floor patio on it. We finished the siding on it, and we did some work on the inside. There was, uh, a leak, and so we patched the leak in the basement and put up gutters so that it wouldn't leak anymore. And so we had gone just about as far as, as we had planned on going as far as fixing it up. And, uh, some of you weren't here last January, uh, but that night, Bill Alberti, if those of you who were here, if you remember, Bill Alberti and myself and Echo got in a full discussion, and Bill Alberti said absolutely those buildings belonged to the city, and it wasn't an issue for us. But we went and I talked to Anita at the assessor's office, and she said, well, I said, you know, there's people coming in and they're wanting me to, to put these over here, and, and it was back and forth and back and forth and back and forth. And I said, look, we, we don't have an, an issue with the city owning these. If it's a, if it's a real problem and it's causing problems for people, I said, we'll settle it. And, uh, so she said the best thing for us to do, because what the country club did was they gave us, uh, bills of sale for the buildings that they own, because they, they, they weren't real property, but we registered them as personal property. And so we called a board meeting, we had a board meeting for a couple of other issues, and during that board meeting, we said, let's just go ahead and, and back off and send a letter that says we recognize that all those buildings belong to the city, that's not an issue. But at that time, then, uh, I had brought some ideas, and you all kind of said you had some ideas of your own, and so we just decided we'll just back off and let you all do what you want to do, because I, I don't want to make promises on it and then have those promises and not be able to keep those promises. And, uh, so that's what, that's what the purpose of the letter was. And I gave it to Anita, I showed it to her, she said that that would solve her dilemma there at the courthouse, and so all of those properties now should be listed under properties that are owned by the city, and, uh, we, we canceled all of our insurance that we had on it and all that kind of stuff. So that's all we were doing, was backing away, and I, we started working on this in January after Bill Alberti made the statement that they were the cities, that we needed to get that cleared up. So it took us that long to get it done. So that, that was kind of the way it goes, and those of you who were at the table in January, you kind of, I'm sure you remember that night. So, anyway, that was the result, and the end result, I hope, of that. And so we just wanted to clear out and say, uh, you know, and there've been some people saying, why in the world would we be spending all that money on a building that we didn't have any interest in? Uh, I think this community needs to understand that there are some people out there that want to do things to help this community. And, uh, that was the reason we started our organization, that's what we've tried to do. We've spent thousands and thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars in this town trying to help clean it up and keep it up. And, uh, so the lake was just part of that. And, uh, so, um, I hope that clears it up and nobody thanks to it.
The money's water, in my opinion, John. So do, do you hold any claim to it, or no claim, or?
No, nope.
Not even the contents, then, is that correct?
Nope.
Contents are all still there, the tables and the kitchen stuff?
Yeah. Anything that, the cracks in the bottom, in the basement, had let so much moisture in, and the humidifier down there went out, uh, with, last winter or the winter before, something like that. And so mold was a real problem. So there was, like, all those tables and chairs in the basement were no good, because they'd all molded, and it got into the fabrics and into the cushions and everything. So, but the, the good tables upstairs, all of those were still okay. And we have put, we did put new carpet in it, new linoleum in it also. Uh, but we just wanted to, to, to back off and, and say, you know, do what, do whatever you want to, we don't, we don't have any claim, you don't owe us for anything that we've done, we just donate that to the project, and, uh, you know, down the road, if you need, need something, let us know, okay?
Thanks.
Is there any other city, or, uh, citizen comments? Mr. Mark Ross? Sorry. Mark is on.
I know you missed me standing here, but...
I did.
A stop sign on Broadway and Shoemate, I wish the board would consider that stop sign. If you'd like to live in my neighborhood for a while, you wasted all the time and effort putting a stop sign in front of Mr. Schroeder's house, which is a three-way stop and no viable intersection. You pretty much slow down when you're coming from the north anyway, but the other intersection is much more need of a stop sign than the one in the street in front of Mr. Schroeder's house. Sorry, I don't know what that street is, but yes.
It's number 12 on the third.
So, yeah, driving by and looking at it, you need to, like, park there, like, about eight o'clock in the morning and three o'clock when school gets out, and, yeah. And all the semi-trucks and the grain trailers and all that that leave the farm shop and don't want to come through town, that come, the heavy equipment that comes straight off the rock road, all the way to the highway.
In your opinion, which way should the stop sign sit?
I would make it a four-way stop sign. I mean, you might as well stop, I mean, because people are using that four-way intersection just as much, and getting some of the stop on Broadway. Of course, you know, I didn't know the stop sign, I ran the stop sign, I can tell you a hundred times before I saw that it was there in front of Mr. Schroeder's house.
I did too.
I'm like, why are you stopping? Why are you motioning me to go on? And I was waiting for them to turn, I didn't even, I'm like, oh, there's a stop sign there. Didn't know there was a stop sign there.
Well, the deal with that Monica was, um, we're trying to slow the traffic down, there's no stop sign whatsoever from the highway all the way down.
I know.
And that's where they decided was probably the best place to stop it. But we also put stop signs earlier before that, there between Moritz's and coming from Ham Street, those two, there's none, it's not a four-way. That might be a place for four-way instead, instead of where it's at, possibly.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean...
Because we got traffic just shooting through there, straight off the county road.
I know, I live there.
And that's why we had to put a stop sign in the middle of it.
Yeah.
If nothing's going to be great, but at least it's...
No, nothing's going to be great, and they're not going to slow down, I mean...
You're going to have some run no matter what.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, they're going to come up the hill and cut through from the county bar road all the way across, because it just, yeah, it's the way to go. But I guess I really would appreciate it if you would look at putting some kind of a stop sign there.
See, it's on our agenda.
Okay. Last time, yeah, it said you were going to consider it, so...
Right.
Just giving you my two cents, because I live in that area.
Monica, do you think they're going too fast, or do you think it's just a traffic issue in general, it's too much traffic? What do you think the biggest issue is?
I moved there 13 years ago, I guess, and traffic was minimal down through there, but now with all of the lovely Edina roads that we have and the potholes and then blocking the streets off to work and all that, everybody cuts through that way from the farm shop over. The farmers that you see cut through there is consistent all day long, that come, that, like, turn at the bottom of the hill, come up the hill, go by the V, you know, come around, go to the farm shop, just so they don't have to cut through town, I'm assuming. You know, people, tractors, machineries, grain trailers, but yeah. But, and most of the time, they're driving the same speed they are that they pull off the highway, and, but they cut down through there.
It's been really bad this summer, because they've had the highway shut down.
Right.
During the sewer works, a lot of people, instead of waiting through that, have gone...
Right, they cut through.
They cut through there so they don't have to wait on six.
And the big, and when school gets back and said, if you want, if you're still on the fence about where you want to put the stop sign, come down there when school starts, because that, like, Angie's daycare is there, the kids, the city workers are going to work, they're coming around, people are dropping off their kids at Angie's, the school buses are coming through that area, and that, it's a big intersection. So I know it doesn't seem like it if you're not living over there, but, yeah. So just put my two cents in, thank you.
I'm trying to be brief, but we have a number of things to go over this evening. Just having an update on progress. Willis Brothers came back and did Fulton Street work, got the service tied in, they'll have a little bit of cleanup work to do with that once it settles a little bit more. They also got the gentleman over there on Fulton Street tied in, out into Fulton Street. So they're done with that extra work, except for warranty work, cleaning it out, which will probably be applied in September when we get some grass and few places there, so... Municipal pipe tool, if they don't get done this week, it'll be next week. They're really close to being finished up, but they're work on the lining and point repair work. So hopefully some of those shutdowns and, and road closures or things like that will be going away soon. Utility Solutions, uh, they're done with their manhole work, uh, except for just a few minor items, one being a manhole lid that seems to be wobbling, and I think, uh, there's a couple of nubs on the lid itself that just need to be ground down, so that they'll set in place and then have a gasket put around it. They had indicated they may be back later this week to finish that up. Plus, we had a couple of things that, uh, in the last big rain we had, that, uh, they had just a couple of leaks and a couple of manholes, so they just have three or four items left. Kick cut contractors, uh, they've got, uh, fixed the sump pump at the Reed Street Road Station, and then they've got some pressure transmitters that were damaged when the, uh, the controls people came, uh, they accidentally turned the power on to them on the wrong voltage and messed them up. They finally got those back in, so, uh, they've got, got to swap those out. And I believe that's all that's on their list to do. Currently, we're underrunning about, to the tune of about a quarter million dollars overall, so, uh, we're really in good shape on budget, and then after night, assuming, after tonight, assuming everything's through, uh, we will be into the grant money as far as our funding, so all the loan money will be, will be finished up. I gave Margaret a current tally on where we're at, uh, with each contract and overall, so, uh, I don't know if there's any questions on any of that. I did hear that Modot had some concern with something, but I, nobody has indicated what that was or called me about that.
Manhole covers on all the state highway.
Manhole covers?
Yeah, they said there's some kind too much, they'd have to either pour asphalt or be replaced.
They're all better than what they were, and they're all either flat.
I'm just telling you what they said, reliable and...
Who, who called you?
Trent.
Trent. He's the one that runs the permits in the state to do the work. Okay. We've dealt with Jared and you're up here on that, so I'm not familiar with Trent.
I, I got a call the other day, and it may be Jared, but I, I won't say Trent, I don't... However, they're not, at, at the beginning of spring, when I took over as mayor, they were alright, and there was no complaints, now there's no, they're not alright.
Okay. I have no idea why, I don't know, they've had some complaints. There's one that is wobbly, and that one will be fixed.
It's on B.
And then there's one, uh, out here on six, to the east of town, that is a little bit low, but, uh, if we adjust it with a donut, then it'll be too high, and you're going to, then they're going to be complaining, because their snow piles are going to get hung up on.
There's got to be a happy medium somewhere.
Yeah, so, um, I'll talk to Jared and you're, and see what their issue is, I, you're, you're not liable for those.
We are, according to them.
I, they're pushing buttons, I'm just telling you. I will, I will address it with them. Alright. I drove through probably about eight percent of the streets of town this afternoon, looking over things, and, and all the high, state highway routes, and those are the only two I know of that are any bit of any concern, everything else is pretty darn flush with the road, so...
Going south of six, south of where Little Jess used to be, he's pretty low.
Okay.
There's one out there in front of Jamie Nippon's, it's kind of low, and there's one, two streets up over, that's kind of low.
Okay.
And the rattling going on, B.
Rattling, when I've heard complaints about banging around when people drive through.
I drove over it and thought the bottom was going, and my car was, hey, dreaming and went...
Alright, that should get fixed later this week, so... So that's where we're at on, on, uh, the progress. So with any, with any luck, we should be by the next meeting pretty much done with everything, for the most part, and we'll just be down to warranty work items, so... I do have a number of items, uh, we didn't have any pay requests or anything last month, so that's why I didn't come, I just said, spread the board, but, uh, we do have pay requests and things this month. The first one is, uh, kick cut contractors, pay request number seven, which is for $1,719. Really? Yeah. Make them all like that, so, I need to, consideration of the approval on that.
They waited for them out, but I was started.
The easement at the farm shop, farm shop will be signing. Um, the easement at the farm shop, farm shop will be signing a couple of hours...
I just sit out here, keep my doubt in mind.
Right.
So, kick cut contractors, one, Rick.
Home labor.
Home labor.
That's it, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know what you're doing for me, I had a couple of other questions.
Okay.
How many days are the, uh, are they overdue?
Uh, as far as...
Municipal?
Municipal, March eighteenth, so, April, May, June, July, about a hundred and fifteen days.
What's the damage rate?
Uh, two fifty a day.
Eighty a day, yeah. What, is there any other reason why they're not done, is there any?
Um, they got started late, that's why they're not done on time. As you recall, they started, uh, I believe, two weeks after we sent them a notice that, uh, their contract time was about up. And, uh, obviously, they've had enough, would've had enough time to get the work done and the time that was allotted because they basically knocked it all out in about a hundred and twenty days, so, a hundred and fifteen days, so, uh, they just got started late. They never did give me an explanation as to why. I assumed they had another job or something that ran long, but...
We had one time they asked for an extension, it wasn't this one.
No, no, no. But as far as municipal pipe tool, uh, what you wanna do about that is completely up to you. Uh, they're, obviously, they're about done, and if you wanna discuss, uh, damages or whatever, they've still got quite a bit of money left on the table. We have here tonight, they'll have a couple hundred thousand dollars on the table, so... So, you know, before we pay them, our last, their last pay request, we'll have that discussion, but they're not, and we have a pay request tonight, but it's not gonna take them even close to where that damage is gonna be an issue.
Well, what the damage is being?
Well, whatever that number is.
One fifteen times two fifty, but...
Twenty-eight thousand.
Yeah, yeah.
Twenty-eight thousand dollars.
They have, uh, their retainage is gonna be over a hundred thousand, so, if we wanna do something, we can just make an agreement with them to not pay them their entire retainage, so. That'll be for a discussion when they propose the last pay request to us. Really, once they got here, they've got about, they've gone about to work, it got done, it's been easy to work, but they just got started late, so. And I don't know why that is. And they've never asked for an extension, and we've never brought one to you, so...
I'm surprised they haven't asked for an extension.
Yeah, that surprises me too, but they have...
It's the good days you're looking at.
Yeah. I think they know that they're behind and they're just, did you know they've been working in the rain? They've been working in the hundred-degree days, they've been here, so...
We see them every day.
Yeah, so, I think they know.
Yeah. The INI flow is down to seventy-one percent.
From the start?
It's about thirty percent higher than what it was last year supposedly. What is the...
Thirty-one percent higher than last year.
It's thirty percent higher, it's seventy-one percent.
Our, 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 our flow, our daily flow is thirty percent higher than flow last year. Now, I did not calculate the amount of rainfall for this year or last year to know where we had it, rainfall, because I didn't...
That less rainfall this year.
Could that be considered part of what they're doing with the stain and stuff?
The water they're putting in is going...
Yeah, that goes down there too, all their jetting water goes down.
So, that thirty percent might be...
Yeah. They're, they're, they're using seventy-five hundred and ten thousand gallons a day, from what I talked to the guys, you know, which is about ten percent of our flow now, so...
It's about ten percent, so we're still looking through, you know, a loss of twenty percent going down over the hill.
Well, that may just be more usage.
Well, also, true, and we're treating everything we use, right?
Yeah.
So, we're using a lot more water, I mean...
We, we are using a lot more water than...
During the month of June, a lot.
Well, that's true, I mean, you've had a dry month, you're gonna use more water, you're an agricultural community, so. Uh, you really can't correlate water usage with sewer so much?
We're not looking at the water usage, it's the difference in what Mike's telling me, he's seeing down on the hill, he has no inclination of what's coming down the hill at it, just what he sees go through, that's what I'm questioning.
Right. So, twenty percent basically is more usage and ten percent might be construction.
Right. So, what can, what do we need to look at as far as the twenty percent?
Well, what I look at is what happens when it rains.
Well, before, when it rained, all of that extra stuff went down in it.
It went down in there and it came out or flooded his plant or filled up in his screen, where we put the screen at. Mike, you can probably give us a better feel based on the rain, how much different it is now down there than what it was before.
Well, the, the numbers that we go by, you know, I mean, I can look at the numbers from last year and I can look at the numbers this year. Before, when we would get half inch, three quarters of an inch or even an inch rain, the influent pit would flood, and you've seen the influent pit flood.
Yeah.
Um, when the water gets over top of that meter...
Can't measure it.
I, your guess is as good as mine because it is way out of range, it's not, so, it'll, it's reading its max. So, when you look at that, we could've been, you know, last year, since it, if it did that three or four times, and even though it's reading its max, it's, could be less than we actually treat, you know, I mean, or not less, but more than...
We don't really know what the max was.
We don't know, because, because it's reading the max, it's, it's above its limitations.
With the amount of dollars we've spent, I'd like to know that and see what we can do different to make sure that... I'd say a percentage of it is the fact that it's going straight to the plant now instead of having to go through all the rotten pipe and... Yeah.
Well, how many times has it flooded?
How many times has it flooded since we've done the work though, Mike?
We've only been flooded where, um, and alarm has been set where that means that the water's gotten out of range for the meter to read one time since we've done the work.
Been a significantly more dry year though.
Uh, how much rain do you remember from that?
Um, we had a, two inches at that time, I mean, we had a substantial amount of rain that...
Two inches and twenty minutes.
Yeah, I mean, it was, uh...
Where is a half inch in two or three hours? Well, you sent us out before. So, to me, that, you have two things that go on, you have infiltration, you have inflow, and your bigger problem has been inflow in the past. We get a spike and it slams the plant with a lot of flow at one time, and to the point he can't measure it because it comes out of the trench that it's measured. And he would get that in a half-inch rain, and now it's two-inch rain. The half-inch rains don't come out of the trench, so, to me, that's how I measure the progress. You can't look at the gallons because in a drier year, you know, there's so many factors. There's your water usage factor, there's your type of rains that you get factor, you know, what kind of rain is it? Is it a three-inch rain at one time? Is it a half-inch rain at one time? How long does it last? Uh, you know, this flow comes back down pretty quick now too, uh, where it, before, which tells me our overall volume is less now than what it has been in the past. And, uh, there's no doubt in my mind, we've got, we've made quite a bit of progress on how much flow is up down that plant, just by looking at the influent pits that's down there. Um, I would caution trying to measure year to year because everything is so different year to year. Last year was wet in the first half of the year, but dry in the second half. This year, we've had, we were pretty wet until about six weeks ago, and we've been, like, really dry since then, maybe eight weeks ago, so really, the last two months have been pretty doggone dry.
What the new sewer line, sewer project, what, take care of well, well, I mean, the flow, right, the water, was it getting down there?
It's supposed to take care of, I'm gonna go where the other, you will never get all of your INI and we, I think Echo can go back to her interviews and...
And new pipe and, and new manhole.
You don't have every new, not every pipe in town.
It could be that. It could be any.
Well, that's not true because we still have, we still have gutters tied in and we still have sump pumps tied in.
It wasn't our smoke detector, the depth check.
They wouldn't find sump pumps, we have to do a house inspection on sump pumps.
But they will find the gutters.
Mm-hmm.
Have they found all the gutters?
Uh, they did the smoke test, we turn the results over to the city, uh, and I don't know if you guys have made those people change, discanalize.
I just got in in April, I don't, I don't, I'm not, I have my paperwork in front of me, so, I'm just trying to get up this...
No, we did the smoke testing and we turned those results over to the city to follow up via their ordinance.
And they actually spent a lot of money, no?
I, I don't agree with you, and I don't think Mike agrees with you either. Uh, things are a lot easier for him to control down there now, and the plant runs a lot better now without these big, huge surge flows that wash out sideways.
Nothing's perfect, it doesn't matter.
And, and I could tell you, you could spend, you could spend what you've spent on this, and the best you can hope to do is deal with seventy percent of the INI problem because thirty of it's in on your laterals out in your system. And you don't own the laterals. Your ordinance doesn't allow you to do anything with the laterals, they're the holes that are...
The problem is, is when it hits our plant, it's our problem, if it spills over, it's our problem, that's our concern.
That's right.
So, if we're still flooding, what do we need to do more about it more?
I don't know that there's a whole lot more you can do unless you wanna take over service laterals. I'm telling you.
Well, if we're running seventy-one percent in a dry month, and we've been dry the month before, we're actually three and a half inches of rainfall this month, and we're still running seventy-one percent of our capability, and we spent this much money. I would like to know why. We can't do something down there at the plant that seems to be the problem.
Why you can't do something at the plant?
Yeah, why, why aren't we treating it at the plant? Why are...
We are treating it at the plant. It doesn't leak, it doesn't escape the plant.
It doesn't go up over the side now, one time this year it has.
Has it?
Yes, it has, I saw it myself.
Okay. When was that?
When was that? The day we got the two-inch rain, the ball field flooded, the ball shack flooded and ran down on the ball field where our kids played there. I wanna know what we...
Did it come out of the plant or did it come out of the sewer?
It came out of the plant and then backflowed through the sewer to the building.
It never came out, it never came out of the influence structure, it, it backflowed through a low pipe.
If it didn't come out of the backflow pipe, what would happen, Mike?
Uh, I, I don't know, I could...
Yeah, bullshit, you do know, it would've come up over that, it was four inches from it.
It, it wasn't that high.
Well, the hell it wasn't, Mike, I was there.
Well, I, I mean, there's a step that's marked on...
There's six inches of geyser down there in the ball shack, out of every damn orifice there.
Well, then steps are eight inches apart, and when it gets to the third step from the top is when it goes out the ball shack. So, three steps is forty-four inches from the top.
How big's the pipe going to the ball shack and how much?
Four inch.
Four inch. So, we got four inches flowing in hard, and then we're sick geysering out of the pipes, out of the floor, six inches or better.
Well, I mean, you can't...
Do you wanna, do you wanna go on record in saying that we, we put the backstop in it, the ball valve, you wanna go on record in saying that'll stop the two-inch rain?
You can't, I mean, how can you?
That's what I'm saying, I wanna address, I wanna, I wanna see what we can do to make this bigger, better, nicer down there. If we need to do a bigger pit, that's what we need to do with our extra grant money.
Yeah, I don't know that the bigger pit is the answer either. Uh, you know, the thing you have to understand about flow is it seats a level, and so, as water is, as, he's pumping through his wet well and he's got his influence structure, all that stuff, it's holding a level.
It magically stops? It magically stops?
Two, two-inch rain shouldn't really affect the sewer.
What magically stops?
That's what I'm saying, two inches of rain shouldn't magically affect it in twenty minutes.
What magically stops?
The flow, you said it, it's, it's...
No, the flow doesn't stop, it, it, it flows at that level as long as it's got something on the other end pumping it out.
I know how water works, okay, I've been around it, what happened?
You've got water backing up out through the ballpark, not coming in from the ballpark.
We gotta go in through the influent pipe going backwards and then going out.
Yeah, that's exactly what I just said. So, he either needs to have more pumps on or more capacity of a pump, that's the only way you're gonna lower that level.
Does he have anywhere else for the water to go?
Well, it goes into his ditch and then he's got...
It goes into his ditch if his ditch is not full.
He's gotta flow out through his ditch, out through his carburetors.
Okay. So, if he's full in two inches of rain in twenty minutes, what do we do then?
Is two inches of rain doing that?
We know how much flow that is because we don't have a way to measure it.
I don't understand why two inches of rain would increase the sewer.
I can't yet.
Two inches of rain increases sewer.
In twenty minutes.
Because you're still gonna get some inflow into the end of the sewer. We didn't replace every pipe, we didn't line every pipe in town.
But we, thank you, go through and look at every pipe, see what we need to do.
That's right.
That is the problem, I wanna know why we're still getting the inflow.
I'm telling you, what you don't...
I'm telling you, I wanna know why we're still getting the inflow.
I'm telling you, it's the services.
It's the services, to the houses.
Yes, yes, that's what I'm telling you.
So, they're leaking?
Yeah, there's no way for us to know.
Our city is not green right now.
What does that mean?
Is there any lush oasis in town, guys? Is there any grass that's not...
Water's not coming out of the pipes, it's going into the pipes. The rains is going in the pipes, it's not coming out. That's what a lateral does, it collects the water and drains it to the sewer, doesn't push the water out into the ground.
And you're saying it isn't our main, it's everybody else's in town.
What I'm saying is, we've addressed your mains, what you have in your system that you can legally address.
We still have to, we still have to go and answer the USDA.
I understand that, but you don't have any, you don't have any authority to go replace people's laterals on their property.
No, but we still have to answer to overflow issues at our plant.
Yes.
So, let's work together and figure out what we gotta do there.
Ball park.
If that's still the deal.
At the ballpark, we put in a backstop, is that correct?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, as water come out, into the ballpark.
We've not had any more rain and that was not something you addressed, that was something I addressed.
And we aligned the manhole that was down there by it.
Yeah, because it wasn't aligned, because my man went down in there and found out it wasn't lined and it called you.
It wa, that line, that manhole there wasn't inspected on the, um, initial deal because it was inside the plant.
That's right. We didn't inspect the manholes in the plant.
So, what haven't you else done? I mean, what is there other stuff that we need to worry about? That's my concern.
Okay, I understand, but you, you wanna play a game of gotcha all the time with this.
I've not played any game of gotcha with you.
Yeah, this, this is frustrating to me because I've sat here, you've sat in all the, I think, most of you sat in all the meetings, and I said that we're dealing with seventy percent of your INI problem, I said that since day one. And that is your collection system that you're responsible for.
At the beginning of this, you said, at the beginning of this, you said, we don't know what to measure, we can't, we can't say what to measure. That's your own words.
Yeah, what to measure down at the plant.
Now, you're saying you've done seventy percent.
No. You're, you're mincing words here. Seventy percent of your collection system has been dealt with. Your collection system, I'm sorry, seventy percent of all the flow that could, all the issues that you have control of has been dealt with. You can't deal with the thirty percent if you don't have the right to deal with it. You follow what I'm saying?
No, I don't.
Sewer laterals, you don't have in your ordinance any authority over that.
Maybe we need to make everybody...
Now, if you, if you, if you wanna take over authority on that through your ordinance, then we can start looking at that and we can replace sewer laterals, we can canvass sewer laterals. But none of that was done because we didn't have any authority to do it, and that's been...
But you did have authority to do all of our stuff.
Yes.
And you did.
Okay, one manhole at the plant?
There's been more than one, there's some spots down over the hill you ain't done.
Where? Over what hill?
That hill.
Every manhole in this town has been inspected.
Was that lined?
Not every manhole's been lined.
Why?
Didn't show any evidence of needing it. We didn't line every manhole in town. We don't see any evidence of leaks going into it. Why line it? Same with your lines in town. We lined every one that needed to be done. That's exactly right.
That's why I remember.
I mean, I'm not, I'm, I'm consistent in what I've said since before we ever even started the whole project.
There would be some not, not bothered.
And, and it looks like picking and choosing because that's exactly what it is. It's picking and choosing based on the need. Why line something if it's not leaking? There's no evidence of it. Why replace something if there's no evidence of doing it? Why line something if there's no evidence of needing it? It's trying to make your money, keep your money, get the most bang for the buck. And that's what we've tried to do since day one. And I've never, ever said that we would be at zero percent INI when we were done.
We can't do it. I know that.
And you're dealing with every lateral. You can't, you can't deal with anybody's sewer lateral.
We've had less than an inch and a quarter, inch and a half rain in this town in June and part of July. And we're still running seventy percent now.
How do we know we're at seventy-one percent when you couldn't measure it last year?
Cause he's measuring it right now.
We're, we're at, we're running at seventy-one percent of the plant's capacity.
Yeah, it's not seventy-one percent last year's flow.
Which, which tabulates to a hu, it averages to a hundred and fifty-seven thousand gallons.
Your whole average last year was over your plant capacity, is that not correct?
Our total average for the year was over our plant capacity, yes.
But what my concern is, we're still at seventy-one percent in a dry year. All this money we've spent, we should be down around forty to fifty percent.
How do you know that?
How do I know that?
Yeah.
Well, if we don't have any INI and water coming in the pipes, why should we? So do we need to build a bigger plant more?
Not in my opinion.
Is seventy percent acceptable?
Seventy percent's fine.
I mean, what does a plant operate at? Is there average?
You never want to be less than thirty percent or it'll have problems operating. And you never want to be over a hundred percent. That's your range.
Well, we're, I can't get past we're in a dry spell and have been. And we're still operating at seventy-one percent of our capacity. I understand, I'm not arguing with you that we may have been over before, but I would like to get under seventy percent right now. That way, next year, when we get a little bunch of rain, we're not running at a hundred and twenty-five percent or a hundred and fifty percent. And have USD egg them up here and slap us around a little bit, or DNR. DNR.
Part of it is our boost stations running max. Our, 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 our pumps are running twenty-three, twenty-four hours a day. They run a hundred and twenty-six thousand gallons one day. That's people buying consumption water, darn it. That stuff goes back down the sewer, but.
How do you know it's all the people buying sewer and water?
The normal household usage, people washing their hands, taking showers, all that stuff's going to go right back down the drains. They're using more water. That's a part of it. And I'm not going to say it's all of it. But our pumps are, we're running not quite double what, what we do in the wintertime, just on our usage. So that's, that's going to be a part of it.
So what do we need to do to solve this?
There ain't nothing to do there. That's, that's paid for water. It's treated water.
Nothing we can do. What I want to do is solve this problem before we get to next year, and we have three inches of rain every month. That's my problem.
What I'm telling you is, the big part of that is water that's been bought. It's going through people's meters, it's going down their drains to the sewer plant.
The first, the first, the first ballgame was May sixteenth. The flood was the Monday before the very first ballgame. I don't know what date that was, thirteenth, fourteenth? Something like that. It was, it was right before the first ballgame, so it'd been May sixteenth. We're July eleventh, twelfth, something like, was it eleventh? Okay. The lining crew was what, forty percent done May sixteenth?
Yeah.
We haven't had a rain. We have zero evidence stating that a two-inch rain is going to flood that plant.
You're right.
We don't, we don't, so, so, I mean, a two-inch ra, a two-inch rain.
It's up to us to find out where it's coming in from.
And that's what I'm trying to do.
The mains have been repaired.
And that's what I'm trying to do.
The houses.
We're telling you, the only place it could cover on us is the houses.
A, after the main, just like Mark said, after the main, after we've addressed all the main issues, and we talked about that when we started the project, is we have to have a place to start. We can't, we don't have the leverage to go to every household and say, you got, you got a lateral problem. You've got a forty-year-old lateral here letting in INI. Because we've got a seventy-year-old sewer system. So we have to make our, we have to make sure that our sewer system is good. So when we go to the homeowner and say, hey, we know that we've got a problem, we've smoke tested, and you've got smoke coming out of your lateral. You have to have it fixed. We have our ordinances in place to do that. And they can't come back at us and say, well, you need to fix yours. Mine's better than yours is. No, it's not. We just spent four million dollars fixing ours. And we've got video, we've got smoke testing, we've got the lining crews, inspection afterwards, pipe, that all back us up saying that we fixed ours.
And that's fine. I'm not going to argue that point. What I'm arguing is.
Two answers to your question.
Go ahead.
Fix the laterals too. That's one. That solves the water coming in, or addresses it. It should reduce it. Or you expand the plant and try to treat everything.
I've got two rebuttals for you. We've had an inch and a quarter of rain in a month and a half. Where's this water coming from? Is the ground squeezing in the pipe, running it down the hill? That's something I can't get out of my mind. I've watched these cornfields and bean fields burn up every day. I see cracks in my yard as wide as my hand. Where's this water coming from?
Springs?
Well, it must be right under the damn laterals.
Is that coming out of the faucet maybe? Well, you know. You're running seventy-one percent capacity. What, what does that equate to? How many gallons a day? About a hundred and?
Hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty. Okay.
One fifty gallons?
Hundred and fifty thousand gallons.
It's right there on the sheet.
So, you got a hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day. But ten of it's contract, you're right.
Roughly, somewhere between five and ten, you know, depends on how many truckloads they use a day.
And you say you're using how much water a day as far as your water system?
It varies. It's been in the one twenties.
One twenties. Okay, let's just say a hundred that gets there. So, we're talking about forty thousand gallons a day that still gets in the system somewhere. Okay, that's a lot of water. Last year.
In a dry month.
Last year.
That's the part I have to address.
La, last year, we.
We had plenty more than that, I understand.
We had a whole year that averaged over the design capacity.
I'm not arguing that.
And now we have months that were under the design capacity of the plant.
And I'm still concerned that when we get an actu, actual, normal rainfall, that we're still going to be over. That's my concern.
That plant, you know, as far as running over the capacity, the design capacity, it's designed capacity. That's not what the plant can actually handle. Peak is what the plant can actually handle. And that's usually about two, three times. I think this plant, it's rated at about seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day peak. That's what your UV system's designed for. So, that plant should be able to handle three plus times the design flow. Now, will it come out somewhere in the system before then? I don't think so now.
It's designed to handle two hundred and twenty-five gallon, or two hundred and twenty.
I'm telling you, the peak is about three times that.
What I want to know is, that we've spent all this money, is it going to actually fix our problem with the N R coming up? Because if we get an actual, normal rainfall, we're still going to be running a hundred and thirty-five percent according to this year's totals. Roughly, it'll be anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five percent.
In my opinion, it will, and this is why, one. One. You have shorter events down there where you have higher flows. Because we've removed a lot of those areas where water was coming in, just blew them and slammed them in the system. So if you take that peak flow, and I don't know what it was before, because we don't have a me, way to measure it. But if you shorten the duration of it, and you lessen the peak flow, then your volume of water that you've treated is less. You follow what I'm saying?
I know what you're saying.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that we're not going to get slammed with a bunch more water that somebody didn't expect, and the N R is not going to come in on us.
You want me to go on record saying something like that?
No, I just want to make sure that we are.
I feel comfortable that we've made significant progress.
I know you've made good progress.
And, and I feel comfortable in saying that we've addressed what was in the compliance schedule earlier last term. And it wasn't just throwing money at it. It was targeting the money.
Where to start though? You, you yourself have said, you didn't know where to start. There's no way to, no way to. There was no way to measure the flow, you said yourself.
We had, he had water coming out. We had sewage coming out of his system down there. He didn't keep up with pumps.
That's what I'm saying.
And now he, now he can more than keep up.
At seventy-one percent. In a dry time. My concern is, with all this money we've spent in the laterals, ours, what have we done over the hill? What can we do different? What do we need to look at different if we're still running seventy-one percent?
You'd have to expand the plant. You don't have available funds to do that.
Why did we spend the money on the laterals?
Because it's cheaper to fix a collection system than it is to add to the plant. And it saves you money in the long term because you don't run pumps as much. You save energy in treating it. When you fix the problem, or address the problem, or reduce the flow that goes to it. That's why, that's why you address the collection system first.
So then what do we do after the collection system fails?
So do we know we have a problem?
Do we know we have a problem?
Yeah.
An inch and a quarter rain in less than forty-five days, or forty-five days plus, and we're running seventy-one percent. It seems to be a problem. I don't know where this extra water is coming from. That's my concern. Am I not valid in my concern?
I think that's a legitimate concern, but what I'm telling you is, it's coming from your laterals. Now, where it's coming from your laterals at? Why it's getting into the laterals? I don't know. You don't have the ability to address the laterals. There's thirty percent of your sources of INI right there in laterals that you can't touch, right off the bat. And that's what we said, draft a whole process. So, if you want to address something, I, and I'll go back to what I said before. You either address the collection system as far as the laterals at the homes. Try to reduce the water, or you expand the plant. But I don't see why you need to expand the plant. I mean, yes, you've got some INI in your system. Is it what it was? No. Are you running now less than what your design capacity is? Yes. Is it even in a dry time? Yes, it's seventy-one percent. Well, let's, let's say we get an inch rain tomorrow and this flow goes up to two fifty for a day. Uh, and maybe we get an inch and a half next weekend, it goes up to two seventy-five. What does that look like over a month? We have a couple of areas where we're running one forty-five, one fifty, and then we pop up to two twenty-five, two fifty. What does that average look like?
What you're saying to me right now is, don't worry about it. Whatever runs over the side, we don't worry about.
Nothing's running over the side. Where's it running over the side?
Where's it going to run if we've got the problem where it ran out the lateral out through the building?
It's going to stay in the plant.
Where?
It's going to stay in the plant.
Promise? Cause the day it doesn't, I'm going to call you.
And when, if you get a four-inch rain, I don't know what it's going to do.
You said an inch and a half. If the backflow render works, and we've got the shut-off valve off, and we overflow our plant, what do we do then?
You have to report it like you would anything else. I'm going to tell you this, that you can't, you can't, that there's no community in this state or in this country that designs their facility and addresses their facility for every rainfall event you might get. Inch and a half, two inches is acceptable. You get four inches in an hour, nobody. You get four inches in two hours, nobody. You're not going to be able to prevent every situation.
I understand that, that's what I'm saying.
But what's reasonable to expect is an inch, inch and a half, two inches.
Seventy-one percent.
I understand.
And we're in the dry months. Two months, we don't have to, be roughly, close to two months, inch and a half of rain.
Instead of, instead of trying to presume what may happen. Why don't we see what does happen and see if there is an issue?
It indicates you from any liability there.
What liability does happen?
Happens after the fact this project's done, then so be it for you. You're paid, you're done here down the road. That's my problem.
Truly sad you feel that way. That's all I have to say about this. You want an adversarial relationship? I'm sorry you feel that way.
I don't need an adversary.
That's what I feel like I'm getting at.
My, my.
I just feel like you've got a chip on your shoulder.
No, I got voted into this town.
Yeah, I understand.
To ask questions, and I'm asking them, and you're not liking them.
And I've worked in this town for twenty years, and my firm's worked in this town twelve or fifteen. You don't think I have a vested interest? I hope you don't.
What I'm saying is.
I do, trust me, I do. You can put that into that, Steve.
Mark, do you recommend that we start smoking these re, these other lines of the residents? To help the situation?
Well, that was always, that was always our second plan. Once we were done, once we were done with the lines, we were always.
She asked him, not you.
That's exactly right. That's exactly what we've talked about, doing, smoking those lines. You have to do it. And right now is the perfect time to do it. Because it's drought, and smoke has an opportunity to escape up through the ground because it doesn't have water.
Yeah.
So, uh, but you need to do it when it's dry. But that was always discussed.
Right, because when we had to do that other division over there, we had the sewer problem, you know, I knew we were going to do it, but I thought maybe it was going to collect, we could catch it with your project.
We, we did do, we did do the smoke testing, and we addressed every issue that we saw with the smoke testing.
But it doesn't pick up septic tanks, you're telling me? Or I mean, some.
Some, no, it does not pick up some pipes. Smoke won't have any. Those require an in-home inspection. If your ordinance does require, or allow you to do it in-home inspection. And then, you know, and I, I remember having this discussion with the board at the time, that you have to be willing to follow your ordinance.
I remember that.
Send them the letter and say, you've got so many days to fix it. If not, we'll fix it and send you the bill, you know, that kind of stuff.
I remember that especially because we'll bring the other subdivision out of there.
But that is, it's generally accepted that laterals, house laterals, is thirty percent of your INI. So we've only been dealing with seventy percent of your total INI. So that's all we have, the forty percent.
Well, I'm not trying to be abrasive, Mark. I'm just trying to get to the problem. The problem is, we're still running seventy-one percent in a dry time. My concern is, in a normal rainfall, we're going to be running over our capacity. That's my main concern.
I understand.
But yet, you're taking the, the stance that I'm attacking you, I'm not. I'm asking questions.
It's not what you're saying, it's how you're saying it. It's a delivery.
And it may be, and it may be wrong. I'm more, I'm more abrasive than the last mayor, and I'm not going to say I'm not. I'm not going to apologize for it. I like answers, and I like to know why.
Nobody asked any questions.
Well, I don't know that that's completely the case either, because, you know, when this project started, I think there were three members on this board. When we started this whole process, you two, and you, and I don't, you came on, and you came on after her, and then you came on, and you came on after that.
So I'm trying to catch up to speed.
And so, you know, some of this, you guys don't have a frame of reference for what we've already discussed, and what, maybe what the project was. The goals of the project were, what we were going to be able to address, and what we weren't going to be able to address. And one of the things you always have to do when you do an INI pro, pro, project is, you have what you think you can accomplish with it. And, and we're dealing with seventy percent of the INI. You can't deal with the thirty percent that's going in and out. You have to always reassess afterwards and see where you're at. And we're not, I mean, we're just now finishing, so I don't think that we've had an opportunity to assess where we're at completely.
What will we be finished?
Next one to two weeks.
We'll need thirty days after that, right?
I think you better look at it longer than thirty days.
How many days?
Why don't we look at it through the rest of this year and see? That doesn't mean I go away.
No, I want to see the flow. I want to see where we're going to be. When would be a good time to start looking?
Start looking now. He measures it every day down there. He measures rainfall. He has to report it on his, his forms. He'll be on every, every monthly report. He has a daily rainfall, flow, all of that. So he's, he's got it, he's, it's nothing different for him. He's just recording the same information all the time. Now we just need to look at it and see what it looks like compared to previous years.
What do you expect it, if you know, after all the, the flushing?
I expect that we might do better than seventy-one percent. Sixty. You already got pretty good flow in the plant. You're not gonna be less than fifty. I can tell you that right now, you're never gonna be less than fifty. And, and your concern is, is what kind of available capacity should the town grow or? I think your bigger concern is rainfall. Just keep in mind that we're talking about a design flow and not a peak flow. The plant can handle for a short duration a much higher flow than two hundred and twenty thousand gallons a day. To me, what we're, what we've improved is we've shortened the duration and we've lessened the peak. We need to assess what that looks like. So when he gets a two-inch rain, this system should respond differently now than what it did last year this time. Does that make sense? And I think he knows that it responds differently now, but I don't know that he's looked at the measurements to actually put it in. Does that make sense?
Really? We also have another issue, Mike, with power down there.
I, I still haven't heard back from, what's his name, Pat?
I believe so.
I've sent him several emails and.
What power issue?
They came in and they.
They're abandoning their pole down there. They're gonna give it to us because they don't wanna replace the pole with the transformers on it. They just want to consider leaving them. So now we have to do something different down there. We can keep it on the old pole where we can restructure everything down there from what they explained.
They can, they're agreeing with you, they can do that too?
Well, they do whatever they want there. And they, trust me, I, I've dealt with them extensively. They do what they wish. And they get away with it.
Our stuff is mounted on the old pole?
Our stuff is mounted on the old pole, their pole they allowed us to hook up to supposedly. It's not as much as them allowing us to hook up to it with C P meter. Our pipe went up with our wire on it, it was C P metered. They're wanting to abandon that and set it outside which they have, correct?
Yep.
And they've tied in from the new pole to the old pole, pole walking twelve feet. And it's left their C P metering out there. They want us to go through manual metering, which means we can also three-phase meter box and everything. Out of our pocket.
Well, and the, the way it was related to me is we don't have to do anything.
But if the pole fails.
But the pole is rotten and if the pole falls, it's our baby and everything.
Where's it rotten at?
At the bottom of the.
At the ground?
Yeah, it's just rotten where it's gonna fall.
Well, we have money in the project, we can do that.
I was gonna say, why can't it be in the project?
Perfect thing to do is just do it that way.
And that's what I told it is.
Transfer switch, but yet we've asked numerous times since.
I don't remember the exact date. It's been over thirty days. They were supposed to give me a, a part sheet and everything of what they want, what they would allow us to do.
Once we get that away, we'll just run that through the Kit Kat contractors contract and have their electrician. Does that make sense?
Well, if we're gonna do it, let's go ahead and throw in a transfer switch too, so we can go ahead and have the plant. We in.
If it call, if it, if there's a.
You wanna get a generator? Well, that's probably the next step.
If there's a power outage, you know, I'm gonna be, one of us, me, Ty or Jason will be at the plant in less than twenty minutes to be able to transfer power. I don't think there's.
We can really initially see this.
Nobody did.
Right. And now it's thrown at our feet and our lapses.
The good news is, is we know about it, why we still have the project. And this is. The second good news is, is we have remaining grant money.
Right.
The bad news is.
The bad news is that we gotta spend money.
Yeah.
You could spend it on something else.
Um, okay, so I need a spec sheet.
There is no spec sheet.
As soon as I get it, I will forward it to you.
I may make a call tomorrow and see if I can get it out of here just in that.
I've still got his card.
I've got his phone number.
Yeah.
Who are you dealing with? Pat Card?
Yes, yep.
I've got this information.
Well, you'd probably get further with that than I will.
I will call. Well, to me, that's, that's not due.
It's what, Mark?
Let's not do it.
Alright, it'd be great time to do it.
Not out of your pocket.
So would a generator falling to that?
Well, I mean, we've kicked around the idea of, of what a generator, you know, if that's something the city wants to look at down there. I haven't really heard any feedback from the city one way or the other, so.
Let's, uh.
I, I think you ought to at least price one and specify the size of the price one. And if you wanna make the decision, you can.
Expect one and the ability to be able to hook up.
Right, that's a good idea.
Now, now you can get one that's permanently mounted down there or you can get one on a trailer mount and use it for some other things and have the ability to run multiple-phase power off of it if you want as well. So I don't know if that's of interest to you.
Price either, that way if we had a fire or tornado damage, we can do those things. What's the, what's the capacity that generator would have to be?
I'd have to size it.
Looks like ten hundred eight capability.
Yeah, you'd have to.
I'll make that be determined.
Yeah, 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 you'd have to count that out, so.
Make sure you can run the booster station and sewer plant at the same time is all I would recommend. I mean, if you get one that close in vicinity and we set a generator, we can run the sewer plant plus pump water at the booster station.
Booster station's single-phase power?
It is single-phase power. The plant only runs about an hour and a half without power and we're in deep trouble. The booster station, the water booster station can run up to thirty-six hours without being in critical need of water, but.
What you've had to do in the last few months?
Need a lightning capacitor. If you could store lightning, you'd be a rich man.
Alright, well, I'll call him and then we'll see if we can cover the next meeting. Mike, as far as the, the flows of things. Can you send me last year's D M Rs?
Yep.
And this year's D M Rs to date, please?
Yep.
And continue sending those one to me when you send them to D N R.
Sure.
So we can just look and see what it's actually doing.
Thank you. There is one other thing for you. Mr. Glasgow?
Yes, sir.
He has approached us with the flow of water around the courthouse. You guys haven't heard of this yet. Uh, he's wondering about digging a pipe in over this way and one this way. It may avert some of the water going to Mr. Dawson's place.
We've talked about that before.
He wants to talk more extensively about it.
Uh, mainly what our issue is up at courthouse, uh, there on the northwest corner. We hold water there. Uh, what we're looking at is through the course of our improvement project, obviously, our downspouts which run into a dedicated storm sewer. Always have. That storm sewer has failed. And we're wanting to reroute those. The best option to come up with is to run underneath our existing sidewalk onto where our parking area is on the north side of courthouse. However, uh, in doing so, there's a storm drain on the, uh, east, northeast side. There's not on the northwest. And where that pole is, the electricity pole in the middle of the, the parking area there, that splits and goes both ways. If we do that, it's gonna make that drainage issue worse on that corner. We don't wanna do that. On the northwest corner? Yes. Uh, the other side, I, I think the, the drain oughta, oughta handle it. There's, should be increased, should, I guess. We would be willing to, if the city would be willing to, to help out it, it would be mutually beneficial to us, I believe. If you wanted to do a cost share kind of thing or, uh, we've talked about even providing the, the culverts as well as the drainage basin, I guess.
Above the northwest corner?
Yes.
And drain it back to the northeast?
Drain it, if you drain it back this way. Uh, kinda estimated, uh, very rough estimate, about ninety feet there to get the proper depth of pole. Probably a fifteen-inch culvert.
You know what size the culvert is going out of the catch basin on the northeast?
I don't know. I guess not much of a chance.
We could catch some of that at work.
Uh, one's twenty-four inch on the.
It'd be a maintenance in the north. Where, where we've had the issue with Mr. Dawson from across the bridge.
But it's too. Splitting into it or something, which we're.
The, the water he's talking about has nothing to do with the water on my side because the south side of the street there by the courthouse does not cross the road.
No. If we do that though, Jeff, we were thinking, I was thinking maybe we could go ahead and go straight north and take the water off the northeast. Be the west side of the block.
But, but the majority of the water that's a problem is coming off the parking lot and, uh, the four-age building and all that. It still doesn't go back to that corner. Only thing coming off that corner is from the water tower to the corner, everything else on that block loses. It does.
Would you be willing to look at this? Do you think some of the water is coming off the parking lot? That's what he's saying is. Yeah, drain right on the sidewalk.
There's no catch basin. It's pre-sized, uh, parking.
Somehow we'd be able to catch a part of that water off that block.
Are you gonna address the drains where bathrooms are at at that time with the storm sewer? But they're, so they don't run in the sewer anymore?
Somebody will put it back. We'll update. Six six oh, two one six, oh nine five two. I've got his number.
Yeah, what you have to look at, like I said, if you guys are just concerned, uh, it'd be beneficial to all of us. Say we're willing to, to help out with it. I don't think we necessarily need the whole Dawson, we need to, to help out for sure.
Roughly, what do you think as far as costs?
Honestly, I don't know. I, I, I don't know for sure.
Did you pin that out or you got some forces or something that would do the work? You would do the work because that, that drives the cost to certain extent. And then if you got back over, you've got one, two, three, figure it out between the two.
Well, you're really essentially what you're doing is putting a pole across the road. It's gonna be a long one.
Well, I'm just wondering about the need for a catch basin over there, but you do the center too. Catch that before it gets caught and controlled too, so. Have to see how that sets in line with their location.
I have to look at the whole picture because what you're gonna do with the water once you get it on this side.
Well, that's it. I mean, you, you certainly don't wanna move, move the problem.
Yeah.
Now, we'll just have to look at it. You guys like to sample it, just see if there's problems. Who knows, maybe it'll come up one day. That'd be awesome.
That's the best.
Why don't we do a rain dance?
Somebody needs to.
It's great, dry. That's the one, rain dance?
That's the. That's the best time to do it. See what's actually happening.
Y'all think wrong.
I gotta see this. We'll get you some feathers in your hair.
Pay request, wrong with the first. Second.
That was Willis?
No, that's Casey.
Know that there's several of them.
Everybody can vote A. That's the only one you can vote.
Okay. I'll try to get through the rest. Kit Kat contractors have deducted change order two. Uh, we had a change order two. There was a problem at the lift station. I thought the base was bad at the school, school lift station. They were never able to get down, get the water down, water. Yeah, to see it exactly. So we, we did a change order two months ago to have them come do that work. Mike got some materials at it. And we've got all that ready and then we called them. And they came up to do the work and they pumped it down. And it wasn't a base issue. It was the way their bracket was connected to it. And so, uh, I said, well, you didn't do the work, so I wanted to deduct that. So they gave me a deduct of thirty-three hundred eighty dollars. Basically, that's what we're working with it on. They still had to show up and deal with the problem, so. So, uh, we need to approve change order five for a deduct of thirty-three hundred eighty dollars.
One second.
All in favor? No? Yes.
Uh, the next item is utility solutions, the manhole guys. They, they, uh, submitted pay request number six for seventy-three hundred eighty-three dollars and forty-six cents. That's really their next to last pay request on that, so. That gets into complete less than retention.
They'll finish them out.
A second.
And they did have one final change order, two, number three. Change order number three for seventy-five hundred fifteen dollars and three cents. And what that, uh, has to do with is, is we got a couple of additional manholes that we, we noted. I know that we found one when our lining guys were doing some work that, uh, after rain was leaking. And so, uh, we had them go in and take care of that. Utility Solutions, the one down by the wastewater plant, we have them line. There's a couple of them that, uh, we haven't put some new steps in because the steps were all, um, ate up and stuff, so. Uh, and then we had a couple that we had some casting modifications. We had some struggles on this project with castings. You guys, I don't have, I don't know how many different castings were your manholes in this manhole. And, and there wasn't a lot of uniformity and so we went to do some adjustments. And we had a lid that was cracked. Well, then we didn't get the lid that fit the casting, so we had some modifications with that. So, uh, that's what that change order is about. That's their final change order. Address that.
So are we more even now with all the?
Remember where we worked is uniform now. I can't say the whole town is, but it's way more uniform than we used to be.
The only one that sticks out, Mark, I'm just going down by the, uh, priest house. It was cracked. We have to address that.
It's gonna take care of it. Yes, that's exactly right.
This from the change order number three.
Change order, what was the change order number?
Number three.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, and then, uh, one of the procedural items when we get to basically a hundred percent complete contract is certificate of substantial completion. And what that is, is that indicates, uh, that they're done with the work that's in the contract. Uh, there may be a few items that remain that would be a punch list for one new work. And so, we've prepared that certificate of substantial completion. And, uh, those things are noted on there. And like I said, they're scheduled to come later this week. Their first and max to take care of the two different issues, so. Uh, and if not, we've got their bond, so we've got a whole year for something else comes up. If they're out of their work, that triggers the one-year warranty. So I bring that up to you. So I bring that up to you.
So this is a certificate of substantial completion for which?
Utilities.
All in favor? Names?
And then they also have their, their final pay request. Which is retainage, uh, that's something that if you want to approve, then you can. How to get a hold of them. Again, I think there's more items on this list. And they have, would just as easily be considered warranty items. To be taken care of for one year. And they're scheduled already, so. Uh, the, the, the final request around thirty, uh, thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine thousand. Yes. That's something you want to entertain.
I'm making motion to that effect. To leave solution thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine.
You want to pay?
Yeah, we still got their bond.
Here, under that second.
Yeah, they got like four, four items and they're done.
Names?
Willis Brothers completed their work for that, uh, work over on Holden Street. So they submitted their final pay request. And we've already closed them out and did that last, two months ago. Closed them out and then we approved that change order at the same time, so, uh, we didn't hold out their final payment. This really is their final payment. It's nineteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars and that's pay request number nine. Where they will be completely done.
They don't have any.
They just got to clean up once it settles. We haven't had any rain to have it settle.
And a motion for pay.
And they're under warranty.
They're still hoping that we get the year on all of them.
Then we have municipal pipe tool. They, uh, submitted pay request number three and it's quite large because they haven't given us one since April, I believe. And so, uh, that amount is five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty-four cents. It represents roughly the last two months of work online. It's not their final. They'll have at least one more, not two, so.
Not familiar, though.
Anything, motion? No?
Okay, and then to order the funds, we have an estimate of funds amount of six hundred and six thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighteen cents. And what that includes is the pay requests that were approved. This is the plainer invoice of sixteen hundred and ninety-five dollars. We have an invoice for dirt and equipment. Uh, one of the things that Mike ran into when we hooked up the floor meter down there at the plant, uh, into our SCADA system is that it would not communicate. And so we had to update this floor meter. And, uh, that was twenty-eight hundred and thirty-two dollars. So we can get that in and with this project. And then, Ty, there was a lift station repair. Uh, are you back through some?
Ty? Ty? Yes.
There was a Vanderbend, Vanderbender bill for a lift station repair.
Pump repair.
Pump repair. It was a pump repair, not, we didn't replace any pumps on your lift station, but I guess you want to talk about that a little bit?
I always pulled one at Farm Home Barriers without. They've done another one now.
You mentioned that the last time at the last meeting. It was, I'm very surprised we replaced bearings and pumps.
Yeah, the pumps are, plus they're gonna give me a quote on them because it's something we kind of thought about their extra money that might get, have a spare. Just, it's like right now that we're running one pump down there. Cause I pulled, I put the new one back we got back and we pulled the other one. It's the same way you turn on. They, they go to shim and shake them pretty bad, but. That's what the Vanderbender bill was. It's like fifty.
Fifty-three hundred.
Yeah. Well, I mean, they rebuilt it.
That wasn't part of our project. It's, it was a pump. We just actually, you know, basic rails and controls and things, but, uh, we can certainly submit that in so you don't have to pay for it out of your general, so. That's what you want to do. In fact, you may have already paid it.
Yeah, we already paid.
So this would be a reversal back to. So all of those things are included. You're asking the funds amount, so. We can approve on that to order the funds to pay. So let's first that.
Wrong, second.
Can I have a little? I don't know if I was spelling that word.
The last item for South Street Lift Station, which I, I wanted to put all that in at one time since it's not really, really related to the sewer project that we had going. Uh, I did talk to Margaret. You said the farm shop is supposed to sign mirrors tomorrow. The trouts have signed and, uh, we're down to Kelly Hayes and his wife, so.
You know, I'm here.
So as soon as those are signed, we can get that project done. It's where we're at.
As you're gonna hold up on that one?
I have. I think the farm shop wanted to see the water line good. Which it is, which has been done, so. And I'm not aware of any other issues, so.
I'm just surprised the.
Well, I will, uh, I'll talk with, uh, Ameron on this electric. Call you and set up something on the support house drainage issue. Any other questions?
Again, I don't want to seem like I'm a brain city, like an interesting, kind of my first time I got.
I'm learning you like you're learning me, so. And I'll try to figure out how to, how to work.
Hard feeling, hard business.
I appreciate. Okay.
Is there traveling to do? Well, the trailer's on the road.
Some people in your park doing that Pokemon app. You hear about that?
My niece was doing it in four of them.
Do what now?
Some kind of a Pokemon.
App on your phone. It's like a scavenger hunt. Pokemon.
What is that?
It's, I don't. I brought six or seven kids in the courthouse along after.
There's about fifteen of them up there for an hour.
I'm sorry, there's so many places.
You need to stay up. She won't love it. You all want some candy? There's plenty of candy up here. Throw it. Which one you want? Wintergreen or?
Wintergreen.
Atomic. You wanna go atomic?
Like a zombie back there.
Want wintergreen?
I don't need to add atomic to it.
Want wintergreen?
Want wintergreen? More?
She asked me.
Am I gonna get in trouble? Anybody? That ain't near enough.
I wouldn't be signing if it's my wrong name.
You can just put D O D on there.
Oh, that works.
My bed's still misty in the clock.
Messy, you're right.
I sign my name at the store.
I see square lines and I'm like, yeah, I guess that's kinda correct.
PK, that's all you need.
Different letters every night.
Dorothy Creek Shouters.
I can tell what. He went down story, but I'll go with. Omar's the only one that's hands pop. He went out with his.
I don't think they'll have this much business.
Yeah.
I didn't say it up. Why is mine really had no people working on this?
Yeah, here I thought I was sneaking out.
And I could've come, but there's not, no activity at home by y'all, so.
Trust me. I'd rather been here than where I was at.
No, I saw on Facebook you were having fun.
Once one by new minute is time.
He stole meters around the world and he went around.
I was there for a week. Eighty-eight dollars worth of beer in five hours. Two of those beers. Two of those beers. That was a beer.
Guessing at least five hours after that, it wasn't.
No. Works off the boiler. Springboard was lagging.
Where was it where the photo was standing flat on the ground?
Who has the best beer?
I didn't like any of them.
I was saying Germany would've.
We did them all. We started out and did them in a seven hour period and then we got rushing into. Doing it quicker. Oh, the world, we're in the wrong. That was the highlight of the trip. It was right there. We did new world. Yeah, I'm a slur.
When's the sign been being better? I think there are a lot of things.
Problem.
I'm making motion to pay the bills in.
Mr. Goss? Is it finally?
It's not dark yet.
No?
That means your time is short. Well, I've already presented you guys and everything. There is some people here. Everybody wants to stand up that is, uh, for the ballparks and everything. Can stand up. And there's a bunch of things going on tonight. Here's a list. I'll pass around them. Everybody I talked to that are very interested in the sermon on this. I've got signatures on most of those. Some of them I, I had talked to and, and everything.
Hey, can I have one of those?
No. I, that's all I got. And my guy only had one copy and, uh. You guys got a copy of this last time and? I do have copies of this. You want to see that?
What you got there?
Oh, you weren't here.
I wasn't here. What's the timeline you're planning?
These are all the same?
Again, as I addressed you guys last time, we would be, um, going to the commissioners next, uh, asking them. Uh, we already went by the deadline to go August or anything so we'd have to November. We would, uh. And after that, I mean, it's whenever we can get funds coming in and everything.
So to reiterate, you're gonna try to get tax levy. How is it gonna sustain itself after the tax runs out?
Well, it'll have to be voted back in. I mean, right now the county's got one tax that is, uh, running out this, uh, in August and they're gonna have to voters to, to continue. So we would have to do the same thing. There's no tax that goes on forever. Everything has to have a sun, a sunset date and would be redone at that time.
We decide.
So you're gonna try to support this by taxing it?
Well, and as I said in the proposal last time, grants, any donations, anything else we can do?
It's under my understanding you can't get grants if you're taxing it.
Uh, not that I know of. I mean, at one time. And John's not here. John Bubby. Uh, at one time John said that this would be the most lucrative way to do one was because, uh, it would be both a county and a city, uh, entity and, uh, that would be looked at favorably.
But this is gonna be under your own, I mean, it's gonna be under its own jurisdiction?
Yes. Yeah, there, there'd be a board set up. Uh, it'd be an elected board. Uh, that board would, uh, take the funds that came in and they would decide how to spend those funds and what they need to do with the funds that they get.
I, I mean, as long as it's countywide.
Yeah.
I have no problem with it. However, our ball field's gonna be regulation sized.
For what?
If we can make them regulation sized, possibly, we can get.
But I mean, what are you wanting? Baseball, softball, or?
Baseball and softball or a few baseball fields.
Yeah, I don't think we have room for a baseball field, uh, anywhere.
What I've been kicking around and been looking at is that we could get two of the baseball fields, not unlike what you have here. Just turn them, pull them together. First base, third baseline, kind of together. Have a, a spot in between, do away with the road going down here and maybe relocate it coming around. Maybe we could get that in there. Both. Maybe we could start getting some, uh.
I, I don't think you have the width. I, uh, to do a, uh, if you, all the ones I look at, uh, like Kirksville Park and everything, uh, to do a regulation baseball field, not softball field or anything else, I think it's, uh, three hundred foot fence. Uh, and it's not the three hundred foot that's the problem. It's the width across from foul pole to foul pole is like four hundred and some feet across. And I don't think you got the width there.
If we turn it a little?
I don't think, whichever way you turn it, I don't think you got the width.
The only thing that I keep wanting to do is make your regulation so you can do some.
You, you would have to have.
For like the traveling teams.
Well, for like the traveling team for softball. Uh, you know, we can do that because there, everybody tells me that if you get three fields for softball, you can have traveling teams. I don't know. I don't know how many traveling teams there are for baseball. I don't know what that entails. I don't think, we didn't have, at the park we've got now, I don't think that was a regulation baseball field down there. I don't know that, I don't know the schools does. I don't know.
I believe the school is. I've got the gentleman looking into that for us. I've not got any answers back.
But, but again, and I want to reiterate this, what we're asking for is the use of this property. It would, I can sit here and tell you all day, yes, I'll do regulation, I'll do three of them, I'll do everything else. We form a board and we get this tax and everything and the board says, we're going to do three softball fields and that's what we're going to do. That's what we're going to do.
Not if you tell us that you're going to do.
I, I can't, if, if I give them the Amelst district money for an Amelst field and then promise you in the world, we'll have a helicopter, but there's no money for it. There's no money for it.
I understand that. But what I'm saying is, is if we can get that, I think we can get a lot more foot traffic with regulation sized ball fields. But I think this thing could potentially stand on its own feet over half. If we can get it done.
Again, the only way I think you can do it is fill in part of the loop because we just don't have the dimensions across there to do a big three hundred foot field for baseball.
Jeff. If they give you use of the land, is that, they'd be kind of hands off, really?
As the proposal was last time, there'd be a city council person on there, there'd be a county person on there and the rest would be an elected board. And the elected board decides how the parks would spend their money.
So it would be the board to decide how big the baseball fields would be and where the stuff goes and. So what you're asking for basically is use of the land, period.
That's what I just said.
Just making, just making it clear.
What, past the ball field, what have you got in plan?
Uh, like I presented last time, the first phase was to move the ball fields out. Second phase would be establish camping areas, build shelters out there, a walking track, anything small that we could afford to. And eventually work on putting the pool out there.
What kind of time?
Whatever. If you can tell me how much money we can bring in and how many grants we can get, I can tell you the timeline, but I think the first year getting the ball fields done, after the tax money starts coming in. I think whatever the timeline after that, I mean, I, I can't, and I can't tell you what the, what a park board would do. I mean, they, they would be represented up in county.
What about the maintenance?
That's what, that's why I, I think anything in North County can be built and we've shown it with the pool and everything. The problem is maintenance. I think the sales tax, a quarter cent sales tax is bringing seventy-two thousand dollars a year. And I think that maintenance would upkeep on everything out there.
So is the city going to maintain it or is the park?
The park board, this is the North County Community Parks Association would be a board set up and they would get.
We don't have this yet.
No.
But they, they will do the maintenance of the ground.
With the money that they bring in on some taxes.
What about liability?
They would be, whatever the city would have to carry on their part because I, I don't have any idea what you guys have to do. But the.
Well, if you're going to use the ground, then you're going to have to care for your own insurance, just same as the golf course would.
That, and that's correct. But I imagine you guys have something on your own too. I, I don't know. That'd be my guess, but I, I don't know. I'd say right now you guys have something out there.
You have a lake and a busy highway. If somebody gets hurt, we're going to fall off.
Well, it's gonna, well, the, the Parks Association would have insurance to take care of that. But again, I think you guys as the landowners would have something too. I don't know what that is, some type of blanket liability, I would think.
I would say it's minimal right now.
Exactly.
But it would be minimal.
Back to this pool. Have you talked to Angie Miller about this? Because she said that their plan was to put it back where it is now. That's what they're working on.
That's what their plan is.
So you wouldn't work with her?
I, I don't think they've got anywhere with it. I don't.
So Jeff, from last month, we were looking at two ball fields and this time I see we're having three now.
Eric, at this, at the last meeting when you were here and he was here, he said that he would like to see a third one happen.
So where is the camping eventually and with the walking trails that you're talking?
All, all around the lake edge.
The lake edge?
Yeah.
Yeah, there'd be a lot of ground back there.
But we're not really interested in going that far back. The red line is kind of where we were talking about wanting to. And I don't really know that we want to go across that edge. Just the first two hills. What I'm showing them is here. This is key dynamic this way, coming back. This is double A. There's a lot of room down around here. There's a lot of room over here and around.
Can we entertain the idea of trying to manage it out properly, whatever we got to, see if we can get regular? From what I've been gathering, just in my talking with people, trying to get something similar to this. Cause there's teams that'll pay you worth of three to five hundred dollars a weekend for a team. If we can get as many as ten teams a weekend, every weekend, every week.
I, I major it everywhere out there and I can't find where you can get that many feet. It's just a baseball field that big.
And that's kind of what I've been waiting on was the.
But, but again, I, I'm not going to sit here and guarantee anything because this is only going to go, us presenting and everything, that's only going to go till there's a board elected. And if, if for some reason that you guys okay this and we get the commissioners go at the tax and the, and the county passes it, we're going to immediately go and have an election. Cause I don't see how you can run this without an elected board.
I, I agree with you there.
And I don't think you can sit and say, okay, you're an elected board, but the city council is going to decide what you guys do out there. The elected board isn't going to do that. They're going to turn around and say, here's what we want to do.
Well. You can dictate by a bunch of people on the door, they can stick it out there.
If it's a park board.
If it's a park board, it's a park board control.
I just don't want to be.
I understand. I don't want to hand it back to us in the lab, but I also understand.
As far as.
I can't. I understand that too.
The Parks Association would have its own insurance.
You do what I want.
But I think you guys are going to have some insurance regardless because you guys own the land and, you know, you guys own over here, you own over here. We're not into that area. And I, you know, if you're wanting us to carry for the whole leg.
We've got a general liability to save.
Exactly. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, would we lease, like lease it?
Lease it.
Dollar everywhere every year.
Yeah, the city attorney would have to draw a whole.
I don't know what else we could do with the place.
Well, I'm not opposed to, I would just like to explore every option we could.
The, the two bigger fields that I'm showing there are two hundred foot fields. Do another hundred feet in any direction.
Two hundred foot deep?
From here to here. Here to here. It's two hundred feet. This one's about one seventy because the little field down here is about.
Where, where? From home plate to?
Home plate to foul pole.
The foul line?
Yeah. So you don't think it'd be.
But home plate here or something?
It's not, you don't have enough room to go to this, huh? It's only, I think it's three hundred feet from the edge of the parking lot to the edge of the highway. To do a baseball field.
So we couldn't rotate it in any more extreme footage?
No, because it's, it's not from the home base to the foul pole. It's from foul pole to foul.
It's wherever this line will fit in this ground.
No, it's this pole to this pole is the widest.
Oh, really? How much is that?
That's what I'm saying. If this is three hundred, this is four fifty, I believe, across there.
So that's what you've got to fit in this area?
What you've got to have. But yeah, but you've got to have ten foot, you've got to, on each side, you've got to have ten forty feet behind.
Ball, fifty-five mile an hour windshield. I can imagine what's going to happen.
So what if we was to move them out to the north end?
If you move them out to the north end, you move away from any facilities we have and you create a hole. I mean, now you've got to build everything and you've got to build a concession stand, you've got to build bathrooms, you've got to get sewer lines, you've got to get.
We don't have to get sewer lines. We'll get tanks. We've got to trap the pumps.
But, but we still have to get all those things right now?
My main concern is, and I keep harping on it, the traveling teams, we do not, we have kids in this town, Scotland County, all the counties. They go to Philadelphia, Missouri to play. What's in Philadelphia, Missouri?
And their baseball teams?
It must be a ball field somewhere. Yeah, that's the only thing. They're behind the school and they go down there and stand in line and play. It's kind of three fifty to four, you know, five hundred dollars a team per weekend, hang up one field. If we were to build three somewhere on this facility, I think it would be detrimental to your organization as well as the foot traffic to our city. To do it that way versus a field that nobody but just the ball association, which is shrinking in size, is going to be able to use.
Are those times that require that you have a regulation sized field?
Yes. They won't play down here for that.
My understanding, they won't play down here now because there's one field. You've got to have at least three fields to play.
Philadelphia, Missouri has one field, Jeff. They go down there to play.
They have tournaments down there?
Yeah.
I, I don't know about.
But it is regulation sized, obviously. I could be wrong. If I'm wrong, I'm not taking it.
I mean, the backstop seems pretty close to home plate.
But they still go down there and they play the tournament, the softball. But if we had, there is not a field in this county that you can play baseball on. Regulation sized. The other thing is, from what I've been gathering is the ASA Association.
That's the soft, ASA softball.
Softball and then baseball. You have to bring in the umpires that are sanctioned to be able to hold these tournaments and we've never done that down here. I'm not opposed to moving the ball fields out there at all, but if we're going to move the ball fields out there. I would like to be able to get the foot traffic here in town to see the extra benefit for taxes. That's my main concern. I'm not opposed to it at all. In fact, I'd go for it, but I would like to see regulation sized fields so that we can get these tournaments, so that we can, so that you can support yourself just a little bit better.
Again, I, I, I'm not going to guarantee anything because again, a, a park association is going to decide this and.
You're going to try to light them up?
Whatever the, whatever the park board would say, I, I don't know.
You've got to get the tax passed first, get the money.
You're going to get the voters to say.
The very first thing is.
The county to get on board.
The very first thing is, can we use the land? And the second thing is, can we get a tax passed? And then the third thing is, if we get it passed, we have total election. Then that board will decide everything.
I'm not opposed to it. I would say, and I'm just speaking to myself at the moment, we'll put it through vote, if we can get it to where you can put a regulation sized ball field up.
I can't guarantee that.
Then you're, you're, you're in an impasse. Cause that's the only stipulation.
Cause if you can tell me how I can guarantee that a board that has not been elected yet is going to decide to do regulation ball field, I, I don't know how to do that. Can, can you think of what?
That's the only.
You can only say you'll try. That's all I know.
If they don't want to put.
I'll try, but I may not be on that board.
I understand that, but if, that's the only stipulation I would put on it. That way we can get the foot traffic in town. That way, then maybe they can support themselves better. That way, I, I see nothing but a win-win with trying to get that done. Yes. In my opinion, yeah. I, if you can get that pulled off.
Okay, let me, let me back up this. How would you do this?
How would I do it? First of all, I need to know the footage, what we actually need. I would probably.
Okay, but your thing is, there has to be three regulation sized ball fields out there. Baseball.
I said two.
Okay, two regulation sized baseball fields out there. So now you've got to go to the other end and do that. And how do you, how, if you're going to do this, how would you get a board that you may not be on to decide to do that?
Well, it's pretty simple for me. I sit here and say, this is what I want to see, owning the ground. If you can't do it, then it's no good. That's pretty simple on my part.
Oh, okay. Well, yeah, and, and if that happens, then I imagine we're not going to go any further because I, I hate to go to this city or county and say, we'd like to ask for a tax, but we don't know if we can get the land.
Mr. Glasgow.
Yes, sir.
If we put a stipulation on that, that it's regulation sized fields, is that going to be any problem for you trying to get a tax passed?
I honestly don't, it doesn't affect me one way or another what size fields are.
But if you were, if you were proposing this and a board was going to be elected, how would you control that board to make sure that that happened? And if they, the board decided not to do regulation fields because they didn't think the money was there?
I'm honestly not real big into getting into hypotheticals, Jeff.
But Eric's putting one out to you and you answered his.
I, I, that was a fact. I really, it doesn't affect us one way or another what size fields are.
Okay.
As far as tax goes, I mean, it, that's something for us to look at. I, my only thing is, I don't see three ball fields going out there that are dwindling ball association is the only ones that will use. That's my problem. That's my concern. So then now we've got this land tied up with chain fences and whatever else we decide to put out there of the park, you know. If you can't support yourself by bringing in extra money, I mean, the, the tax could get voted down at the next election.
Sure could.
So then what do we do with the ground after that situation fails? That's my concern.
But, okay, but I mean, if you're not arguing that, let's just say that we put.
Three regulations. Kind of like letting the cart over the horse, but keep coming here.
I know, but let's just say that you put three regula, or two regulation sized fields out there and you get your tax pass and everything and they don't renew it next time. What are you going to do? You're going to tell them, tell them the same thing that I'm telling them back. I mean, now what are you going to do?
How are you going to, how are you going to subsidize your incoming money with a field nobody's going to use versus one that people potentially will?
How would you do it if you don't have people, if you don't have the tax money to do yours?
Well, I was going to probably actively seek grants if I was to build.
We, we would too.
And I would estimate kind of what I think I could get as far as revenue from the ball association and the traveling teams. And slowly put the money in for the camping.
And that's exactly what I'm saying to do. I, I'm just, I don't know how you can estimate revenue on foot traffic that you don't know if you can get or not. That's my image.
I can't, but what I can say is if you're building ball fields that associations will not use other than are dwindling. At some point, your money's gone. It'll, it'll self implode and then we will not, we'll have ball fields out there nobody's going to use. So.
Can I make that?
Yeah, you can make some.
How much did you get out of the land this year?
Three hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, then, then let's say you put some ball fields. So you're losing three hundred and fifty dollars a year?
That's not the issue. The issue is at a later date. When the ball fields are installed, who's going to pay to take them out if something else comes along? That's my concern. I would say whoever the next person that wants to do something would be just like we are.
But the problem is not, not everybody's going to want to take over a failed little position all the time. I mean, we don't have them really standing in line right now, Jeff. That's the deal. I mean, the golf course is imploding. And we've had the Hayden organization, Mr. Colton's organization's used it and we're sitting here with the throat in our lap. We don't know which way to turn, bud.
I, I just propose this. I, I just propose this, you guys know-
I, I'm not, and I'm not saying that you can't use it, I'm just saying that would be one stipulation that I would wanna see. And I, it's not, it's not to be a stumbling block for you, it's to be-
It is a stumbling block.
Well, if it's a stumbling block for you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, 'cause I, I just don't know how I can, and, and maybe Claire or somebody can help me out on this. How, how do we guarantee them something that we may not be a part of?
I think maybe you're supposed to see if it's an option. Maybe, maybe somebody could design it, this ball field that he's wanting.
It's not that what I'm wanting, it's what I feel that we need in the community to have. If it's gonna be like the Little League field over the hill for the little guys, we're gonna have one of those and like two of what we have. We don't get a whole lot of foot traffic or use out of those. So if we put two of them out there, and then move the little one out there, we're not gonna have any more revenue.
But I, I think that's because it's flooded all the time and we can't use them. Is, I mean, the last few years, the days that they were able to be used was, you know-
All right, I'll back up and ask you this. Now how can you prove that it was because they were flooded all the time?
Because there was water over the top of them.
I understand that, but it's the same, same scenario I have. If that wasn't flooded all the time, I don't, I mean, I, that's the only thing I'm throwing out there. I would like to see regulation fields. If that's a stumbling block, I'm sorry.
It's not a stumbling block for me, I'll guarantee anything you want, but I can't guarantee-
I just wanted to add something to, with getting a tax pass to pa- to form this parks and rec department, not every taxpayer in the county is gonna be, is gonna want to pay a tax for just baseball fields. I think if we come in and there's the possibility of having some other things that can benefit everybody in the county, I think that is gonna be more favorable to people wanting to vote for it. And also with grants, I, I do write a lot of grants. They like to see diversity in grants, and so it's gonna be harder to go after grants just for ball fields. I think that's a stumbling block as well.
What I would like to see is, yes, I would like to see the ball fields there, and I would like to see them regulation sized. I would also like to see the campgrounds there. I would like to see a pool and walking trail. I would like to see somebody take and ruin this building with a restaurant slash concession stand in it. I'm not opposed to any of it. The problem is, is we need to get it in a, in a, we can't just say, yeah, we're going this way. We gotta say we're going this way.
Ki- Cameron, when they, when they had the election for the board, isn't, isn't it gonna be like any other election? Or, I mean, there's gonna be a campaign, I imagine, there's gonna be other people, they're not just gonna be appointed. There'll be several people and can't, can't everyone-
The ambulance district board, the-
Can't everybody at that time address the-
To get a feel for the county and what people-
To feel what the candidates are doing, and it's up to us as people, if that's what you'd like to see, try to get the person that's for the same views elected, correct? I mean, and not the same, I mean- But, but the thing is, I, I mean, I think you want me to say, we would definitely put regulation sized fields out there. I don't think as an elected board you guarantee anything. No, you can't, but what I'm saying is, is those people that are being elected-
Right.
Have to serve us as people because we elect them.
Right.
Correct? So, we elect the people that view the same as us as far as the ball field, correct?
Correct.
The same way, I mean, you got elected because people wanted you to ask questions, as you stated earlier. So, those people came to you, wanted you to ask questions, and they supported you. So, we support the people that wanna build regulation fields if that's what you want, correct? But if the majority of the board says, no, we don't wanna do it, then we can't force them to do it. I don't see how we could. I understand, but I mean, democratically, that's how that works, correct? Yeah, we can't say, you gotta do it, no matter what, you gotta do it. We can't. That's my thing.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's opposed to the regulation field. They're just, we're just wanting to get some, I think, something going.
Well, and I'm not opposed to it at all, I just-
We gotta do it, we'll get it right.
Yeah, and that's-
I don't, I mean, I don't go out and do anything half measure. I, Mr. Brofson, I got into it. I didn't pull any punches, I got right to the point. I don't do anything half, anything. I don't try to anyway. My wife might disagree, but-
So is there, so, I mean, you're only saying the baseball fields. That's the one thing you're worried about, the regulations, the regulation baseball fields, right?
I mean, wouldn't you, if you could, if, I've done the math on it, and I've talked to several people, several parents. If your son and his team went and played, they paid three to five hundred dollars a weekend. Guaranteed six to ten games, four to six games. Okay, if you had a complex that had three ball fields on it, camping for you to stay on, and you can stay in our lovely motel, and we had a pool on site with a walking trail around it, fishing area, who wouldn't pay five hundred dollars in this area? You point a direction and go a hundred miles and try to find a complex like this. There will be people standing in line to play at this complex if we do it right. If we do it halfway, we might as well just keep playing over the hill. And I'm not trying to be mean, it's just what I've, I've went out and felt people out. I'm not saying that, no, I'm, I'm opposed to this any at all, but if we get the extra inflow of people in town, and you can get five hundred dollars a team per weekend, and you can get ten to fifteen teams per weekend for three months, you do the math. Yeah, if, if- It will be a big shot in the heart for you. If, I, I can hear, I agree if you can do all that, if you can get those things done.
You could make this one regulation-
Eric, I got a question for you. Is this a project that you're gonna want the city to, to have control over?
No.
Or have any part of like, you know, to mu- to any part of like managing or micromanaging any part of it?
I want a board and I want it all-
County wide board.
Yeah, I want, want a representative from every city in the town, health department.
You just gotta do it by townships, because you can't do it by cities, because I don't live in town, and I don't wanna have a say in all of it.
That's fine.
You know, you gotta do it by township.
And that, you may have more valid point, but I do wanna see-
But that's what this board would be, it would be set up that way.
Well, how many, how many member boards are you talking about?
I would think there's, you, you don't want too big a board. I would say between six and eight, and then two, a one council person and one county person.
What about the health department?
Why would they be on the board?
Why would they not need to be on the board?
The health department?
Yeah.
Why would the health department be on the board?
Why not?
But then, why wouldn't, uh, ambulance district be on the board?
We'll argue about this later. We're gonna be here all night now.
That's fine, build time already.
Either, either vote on it or don't vote on it or something.
So that's you guys, right?
Yeah.
So you guys are-
Are we gonna try to get regulation sized fields or not?
I'll guarantee we'll try to, I, I, I don't think I need to say any other-
If the city owns the property, why can't the city put the stipulations on it and say, hey?
That's all I'm saying.
I mean, that's the only thing we're saying.
The, the only thing is, the next step is to go and ask for a tax, and go to the, the people in the county and ask them to pass the tax, and-
But we're still, we're just putting baseball fields, we're just putting fields. That's the one thing I'm saying. I'm not talking anything different, is you're wanting to put baseball fields out there, he's just saying put regulation fields on there. So, it's, the city's just giving us the property to use, and so they're just saying-
With one stipulation?
Yeah, that's it. That's the only thing you're looking at.
That's all I'm saying. So let's say, let's say we get this tax passed, and everything, everything's done, and the new board gets elected, and they choose not to do it, and they don't get the property, now what are you gonna do? They know that's going into it.
They know going into it, that's what I'm saying. The city owns the property.
You guys can do whatever you want to on the stipulation. I, I think it's only a hard sell for the taxpayer, but I, you guys can do the stipulation on your side. I-
If it's gonna support itself easier, I think it'll be a walkout. I entertain the motion to put stipulation that they get regular sized fields-
Regulation.
Regulation fields, they can use the ground.
Hold the ground.
No.
We can't put them on this property, we can't. We have to go to that next hill.
You gotta have room to do it.
Yeah, you gotta have, yeah.
You can use the northeast, but you can't use the west side. There's nowhere in there for you at all.
Yeah, there isn't.
When you use the northeast or the southeast?
Wherever they can fit them in, as long as they're close together in proximity. Is that acceptable, Jeff?
Um, I guess. I mean, that would be up to, again, that would be up to the board to decide where they wanna put them.
What, what are we saving a piece of ground out there for something else?
They just mentioned camping or walking trails and stuff.
Do what you gotta do.
Walking trails closer to the building.
There is other things.
Right, but we can put that closer to this building and utilize it the same way. I just wanna see the ball fields all in close proximity, that way if we build a, if they build a hook shack out there that can be utilized, they can put one tank in out there, we can pump that out and bring it to the city server.
I'm sure they're not gonna do anything other than sensible, but I might be wrong.
Well, those are the stipulations, if they wanna use the property we own.
Well, it might be something you can do in phases, if, you know, if there's not room on there, or both of them on there, you can down the road, but fill it, use porta potties or support concession stands until you can build something.
Correct, and I'm not saying it's all gonna be done at once, I just wanna, like this here, it would take road, it would take travel, it would take restrooms at each location. If we were gonna do three, we're gonna do a regulation sized, if we're not willing to abandon this road coming in, turn them and pull them together.
To do a regulation sized, we've got to move them to the north end. There's no way.
I disagree with that, but-
Okay.
Do you know the sizes, Jeff, of the regulation field? Do you know what, what they have to be?
Three hundred feet long and a baseball field.
I said regulation.
Three hundred foot is a baseball field.
Okay.
That's-
A baseball.
That's home plate, so they hit to the foul line.
Four forty wide.
Two and a half hours.
Four forty or four fifty.
And you gotta have, that's a foul ball, and then you gotta have, is it ten feet?
Clarence, rally.
Yeah, it did, there's quite a bit more area. I mean, I, I went on Culver's stop, uh, if you go on Google Earth and you measure in him, uh, Culver's-
So a five hundred foot circle that fit a regulation field?
Uh, not a circle.
Why not? It'd be five hundred foot in every direction.
That's right, it would. It would be overkill in some aspects, but it would fit in.
It might depend on how fit in there, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, but it, the sides aren't over five hundred feet wide at any widest point.
Nelvitcher, going from the backstop out to get to the line going across.
Three hundred feet.
Yeah.
It would be, I mean, it would be close.
Five hundred foot circle of regulation field would fit in?
Just, just the field, and not getting the backstop and the, the foul, uh, where the field or the fences would be, and the dugouts and, and everything would not catch. That's what I'm saying, if you do the like Culver's stop, then to look at a Google Earth and measure, and their center field is, uh, four fifty. The center field from home base.
Then they, then they've just increased some of this out here. So that, that still fits inside a five hundred foot circle.
Well, the problem is-
The circle is gonna be like that, so you got area here, area here, and area here.
Well, the only thing is, and I, I'm not arguing with it, but-
I'm, I'm just gonna go out there and measure five hundred feet in a circle and see if it'll fit in there.
Yeah, and you, you could try, because you're gonna go out here to three hundred feet, you're gonna have a line across here, and five hundred feet, you only got two hundred feet left, and then you're four forty across, you're not the center of the circle. So I, I, I mean, if they are, they not, I don't know. But I don't know the five hundred foot circle. I, I don't-
I can find out.
You go on, like I say, Google Earth, and you go to the Kirksville Park, Kirksville's got them in circles. Four parks run out front.
But I don't, I entertain a, a first with the stipulation. I, I just wanna make sure that we're not liable for individuals. We can be liable for the land, but not individuals. And that we will have regulation sized fields here as well, that's what you said.
Make sure you say baseball field.
Baseball field. If, if, uh, yeah. And then they can use the ground on the east side, west side of Highway fifteen, from the south boundary to the north end, wherever they can put- John, you first, Jeff?
I will.
And this is to take this information to the city attorney, for him to draw the lease?
This is, this just, we, we can't even lease it, because it's not an organization.
Yeah.
I mean, it seems like it doesn't have to be for permission.
I would like your opinion on the liability, but-
Yeah, or get an opinion from the city attorney about even doing this, so that we don't find out later that, oh, yeah, we pass all this, and then the city attorney says, can't do that.
Weird.
Smart. That's smart.
So two baseball fields.
Yeah, that's smart.
That's why Martin, that's why Martin's about.
Two regulation sized-
One regulation softball.
Okay, wait a minute.
Well, they, the other one's not a problem, there's two regulation baseball fields.
Regulation baseball field.
First softball for field, two baseball fields and one softball field?
Wait, there were the little kids. They can play on softball.
Softball field.
But you can't play softball on a baseball field.
You can't bring the infield in. I'll be darned.
You don't, you don't know hillbillies very well, do you?
We always play kids.
I play golf on a baseball field.
But if we're going, we're going for a good draw and trying to get the money coming in, possibly get as much of it for, for Jeff.
So the board agrees by consensus?
Scratch that, scratch that.
One regulation baseball, one regulation softball.
I've got a headache.
You got one. You are the first one. One regulation baseball, one regulation softball. You still in the first row?
Yeah.
Sure. As long as-
Okay.
All in favor?
And that's, that you wanna see that out there, one regulation baseball.
We will allow them to use the ground if they put this up.
You need a case of marking paint, Peter, or what you are.
If you go on Google Earth, you can measure everything out there, including elevation.
It'll tell you whether or not a baseball field fits in a five hundred foot circle.
Well, I mean, you can't do this circle, it's just gotta be the backstop out and across.
But the easiest way for me to get an area measured would be without doing all of that.
It'd just be, put a string right in the middle of it, go out and pick your feet in every direction, and it'll fit there.
Don't get hooked around a three, eh? Throw the five out there, then you can find it.
What's that?
She says you need four and a half acres.
Ninety foot bases with four hundred foot fences says approximate need, space need is four point five acres for a baseball field, and two point five acres for a softball field.
You can find that out thirty-five acres, sure.
Jeff, you just lost.
No, I, I just, I, I, I still just think it's, it'd be like me asking you guys to do, to promise me that the next city council board, not you guys, but the next one will do something.
Well, it's not anything like that, because you're using actual property that the city owns, we're in charge of. That's quite the difference.
The city, but yeah.
And who voted us in? So technically, we're looking back. I do too, but still.
The whole what? Ritz, is that what you said?
So I do have one more question. Did it pass? Did you guys pass? I didn't see it.
Search on. It did pass. Go for it.
Yeah.
So there was a vote?
It passed with regulation.
Keep us in the loop.
There was a vote?
Yeah, we voted, yeah.
Missed it.
Ron was first, Rick was second.
Margaret, did you write down the motion? I'll get it from you later. Will you make me copies of all that paperwork he passed out?
There's no many laws scribbled, isn't there?
That's cool.
Oh, boy. Department reports. Everybody awake?
Do you wanna move on? Yes, I'm swinging home.
Well.
Was it best for last or something?
No, go ahead. Come on. I don't like going to do that.
I just got a spot for a new adventure, thinking maybe I can open up a bar and grill here in town, and, and, you know, providing a little bit of entertainment and food and get some people out dancing.
And this is a former, that was a.
You must be Lisa.
I am. I've lived in Mexico for twenty-six years, I'm a registered nurse at Dr. Three One Nine Center, I've worked for the last twenty-four years, I raise my family here, um, I'm under the school out here.
You not got enough excitement out of person?
You, you know, I love my job, I do, and it's, uh, um, I'm still gonna do it, I'm just gonna see maybe if I can't figure out something else.
That's what I was gonna ask, who do you anticipate on running and managing this?
Well, I've got a lot of support from my family and friends, and, um, I think, I think we can.
Okay, um, I have issue, or thought, not an issue, I guess, how is your report the police department, if you have issues, you have to call the police department to come? Are you gonna back our city if you have to call them?
Oh.
Our police department?
Of course. Oh, you mean because of past issues?
Yes. Just anything in general, if something happens, you need our police, we need you to be in support of our police department.
Yeah, I'm not stupid.
Well, I didn't say you.
No, no, I'm not, I'm definitely, I know how that works. Absolutely.
Any other questions?
What, uh, you have any hours of business that you don't plan on dealing?
Attentatively, um.
Daily, or?
Um, I'm.
Have you thought about this?
Well, you know, I'm thinking we're gonna close on Mondays, I'm thinking, maybe Sundays and Mondays to begin with, but, um, I think Mondays when we are, are being be closed, at least initially, until we get up and running. And maybe, I haven't really figured out opening time yet, yeah, I just kinda wait to see how things go, but I'm thinking maybe eleven, midnight, uh, one thirty on the weekend. I do eventually wanna, you know, open up a kitchen and sex or any meal, and it'll be light beans at first, and wings would be third, specials and stuff like that, but eventually maybe, like a lunch special. The place needs a lot of work, it needs a lot of training, so it's gonna take time, I don't anticipate opening immediately, probably, I'm, I'm thinking September, maybe right around the time of corn fest, maybe we have a grand opening or something.
Any other questions? Who do you have in mind as first staff?
It's just gonna be families, I have an aunt who, um, ran a bar for the last twenty-five years, and she's moved back here, so she's gonna kinda help me. I've got cousins and granddaughters and children and friends, like I said, they're all anxious to help out, so.
Something goes wrong in the bar, you know, make sure that, they're the police department or something that don't know before they stick the ball line, cause I mean, the F W's, other bartenders have problems of getting the law down there, something happening to be liable ones, I mean.
Yeah, no, I've never ran a bar before, but I, I know that you don't waste time, things start getting out of hand, maybe you help with that. My mother was a bartender for thirty-five years, the, the city where I grew up, the city owned the liquor store, so she was a city employee, and they, they got one with an iron desk, so she kinda told me some of the things you have to be aware of.
Well, with the recreation establishment, what you're suggesting, there's always, there'll be a five, so to speak.
And then I was thinking I'd just get one of those cattle prodders thing on wall.
She's been talking about mine for a long time. Anybody else have any questions? Chair with, uh, any kind of motion? Great.
I, I hate not seeing any business come in town, but I just know in the past, it's really BFW has been issues, and not handled well, the police department, I mean, the police department wasn't real, I don't think they worked really good together, you know what I'm saying?
Um, BFW is not gonna handle any of the issues.
I understand that now, but I'm talking the building and the past, and the location and the traffic that's been there.
The clientele.
The clientele, yeah, that, uh, I just want you to work really well with our police department, I mean, we gotta work, we can't let it get out of hand.
Right.
Well, I'll make a motion, I guess, to give them a permit.
Ready first? Buddy second?
I'll second.
Rick second? All in favor? Three yes, Rick, ready, Delman?
What, what are your concerns about that? I mean, this is a new adventure for me to, I've, I guess, I've never ran a bar or a field before.
They had a lot of problems round there, backing, closing down.
I actually, um, I kinda worked in, I have my lawyer working at the contract agreement with the owners, and, you know, if things don't go out, I have like a six month out, and then a six month out, you know, cause who knows how things are gonna go.
Right.
I am looking to do classic stuff a little bit, you know, like I said, it needs a big overhaul, but, you know, it takes money, it takes time, but.
All those not favored?
But.
All those that don't.
Kinda on the fence on this, I'm collecting on who's gonna be around the place.
I think me.
You?
Me, how do you?
When you're not working the other job?
Well, you know, I'll have, I just think.
I'd like to, I'd like to know who we're gonna be dealing with, as far as who's the guy in charge, or the gal in charge, you? You guys are worried about me, I have nothing to do with it. Who's he?
No, this is, this is my, my, my adventure, my midlife. You know, my, I grew up, my family ran a restaurant for years, and I have an aunt that has run a restaurant personally, I was in twenty-five years too, so, I mean, it's kinda been in the family.
So what's that you missed or anything?
We need the business, I just don't want headaches.
And that's why I keep saying, you've got our word with the police department, you gotta back our city.
So you know it, um, at the hospital, where we're, um, there's a, there's a button underneath the counter, and when you push that button, it goes straight to the.
I'm not sure we quit quite that well in the diner. Cause I'm sure you're gonna need calls. But it's business in the community, and there's so few of us now, you know, we need to be ready and everything right.
Give me a chance, come on. I'll be good, I'll, I.
On your word. Air and air. She said she's gonna do good, let's go with it. Is he a four, one, and one on song?
Oh, I mean, you need to eat through.
Why, no, it's not the lie, it's not that.
Like I say, I mean, if it got out of hand, okay.
Right, shut them down.
Shut them down, I mean.
That's right.
I'm sorry, I didn't know that, but, that's your, that's your.
Yeah, that's my husband Gary.
Right.
Are you all living?
We're living, we're living.
Alrighty, it's fast.
Thank you.
Enjoy your endeavors. Enjoy. Make it big.
All right, I'll get started right away.
Good luck.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, now, I don't want to.
Germ.
Yeah. All that. Is there any other new business?
You remember your pillow like next night.
Is there any other new business?
I'm just spectating.
Spectating? Never knew you'd keep the mouse up there.
Let me tell you.
It's been done.
I said I got some things.
I'll keep you all later. What is he doing?
Heart.
You got Ty and Mike? Make, make the lady go loud.
My turn?
She gonna stay anyway.
She gonna do it now, so?
Few concerns of last month, um, park swings have been fixed, the wood chips have been put in, um, the bathroom's been cleaned every day, the door was fixed, uh, like all the mowin's up to date, we did do succumb mow before the fourth, um, as everybody knows, it's been dry, so we put tubes in, we did a few ditching, um, we did get the hole fixed at the lake, the panel around that. Farm shop's water line, it's done, it was done, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, something like that. As most people know, we had a water leak today, so we rested that all afternoon. Our Campbell Street line broke again, um.
Campbell Street?
Third time in six months, less.
Third time in like three months. It broke right before you come in office, right?
Right before this.
It was about March, broke twice in two days, and then there was another one. That's the one where I tried to call and have people come look at it, and I got Ron and Ron put those before.
Oh, that's the one where the line's already there, we're just not attached to it?
And I would highly recommend we get it done, because it's, it's, it's bad.
You can't do it?
I don't have to.
You what?
I don't have a tapping tool for one, I've never gotten a tool caused. No idea.
We should have a tapping tool, didn't we, Mike?
Nope, nope, why do we need one? We don't tap services.
Well, I'm sure we did through the years.
I've never seen one at the city barn. It was always the customers' responsibility to hook their own services up, and we didn't maintain.
Well, the services are already hooked up to an existing line, it's.
There's already a tap there.
It's our responsibility to move them now to our new line.
I, I agree, but we never had one, cause they never did any of that work before, so they never had a tapping tool, that I've never seen, now, I mean, I.
How high are they? You have a clue, Ty, Mike?
I don't have an idea. I've, I've, I've got several, you know, I mean, I've got tapping tools, um, I think.
Twelve hundred, fifteen?
Oh, no.
Nothing like that?
No, no, no. About five hundred dollars would be out of ballpark, I think.
Is there something we can do now?
But.
What would it cost if you still ran your water line business to tap them?
I wouldn't tap anything less than six hun, I wouldn't tap and set them either for less than six hundred dollars a pot.
Six?
I, 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 I think horses somewhere in the six fifty, seven hundred, somewhere in there too, but I mean, and he brings all of his material, you know, I mean, that's including the setter and the corp and.
And it's not even, it's not setting meters, and I'm just moving one water line to another one though.
Right, so I mean, you know.
Cause see, Mike Ward, those, I thought you and Alan hooked all that up when y'all laid all that, to start with.
We laid the water line, remember, and we had trouble with our samples in D N R, when we sampled all of that, in their lab, and then we got them to change where we could take them to Kirksville, cause they were timing out before they got there. And then it got late in the fall, and we elected not to do it that fall, at spring, Alan was diagnosed with cancer, he was gonna, when he took over and I moved the plant, that was his first deal, that spring, is he was gonna hook those services in, well, we all know what happened there, they never got tied over. The line's in place, it's ready to flush, you're gonna have to.
I understand there's more than one place, so two, right?
There's that and Hill Street.
Two locations.
Yep, that, the Hill Street and the one at Campbell, both of them were gonna be.
Well, I don't know, it's not twelve on that one, is it? You should, ten or near.
Yeah, I'd rather make it.
By how much time will we, would we say would take to hook that?
It, you know, I mean, it, it depends, you know, I mean, as far as time on it, if, if they were, if all they were doing was that, and there was two guys on it, they should be able to do three to four a day.
No, they can't do that many.
But if they, but if they got called out to do anything else, you know, by the time, you know, I mean, that, with four guys on the crew, two guys picking up trash, you're looking at probably one to two a day. You know?
And we have one too, what's that mean to do?
And I, I mean, I'm not.
We have six to do, and it's six fifty, if it's six hundred, it's thirty-six hundred dollars, out of our bar. That's more than, twelve on that one line.
And I'm, I'm not, I'm not knocking the boys at the barn, by no means, I, I work well with them, tapping live water main is something that's gonna take a little bit of finesse.
A little bit what?
Finesse.
Finesse.
I mean, you're gonna, I can show them how to do it, but you push too hard, you know, I mean, you push too hard as you're drilling in, you don't push hard enough, you turn too fast, you do this, you do that, you split the water main, then you're in a whole different world.
Why can't we put it out for bits and, is that not?
We'll do whatever you want, the problem is, is if we can get our own crew to do this, versus at least one three to thirty-six hundred dollars, you're easily talking.
Big savings.
Either hand or better. See if you can get them to do it for six fifty.
I mean, it's far worse. You guys, you guys tie, then I'll do it.
You what?
I said, if you guys tie, then I'll do it.
I, I know, and I, like I said, I.
You all appearing to help?
I don't have a problem, I, I work for you, I don't have a problem tapping water main for them boys, I, you know, I mean, I don't have, I don't have a problem going above and beyond for you guys, I, I mean, as long as everything goes bookplace. I mean, I don't have a problem bringing my tool in, it, it's a, it's in the truck, if you want me to go get it, you know what I mean, it's a, it's a wrench about this long, you know, all that.
Again, we, we got into that, that stuff from.
I, I'm just saying, you know, but.
Yeah, I'd kinda like for you to help, at least get them going with it.
I, I've, I've tapped it.
Well, I have no interest in it, is what I'm gonna say out there, cause I've never done it.
That's your job, Ty.
No, that's a contractor's job.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is, it is a contractor's job to tap one.
So you're saying you're not wanting to do your job?
No, I didn't say that, I'm telling you, that's not mine.
So why don't you just tell us what your job is?
Let's look around there, yeah, come on.
You tell me.
You, you, I got rolled in as a supervisor of utilities, you wanna pay me, contractors pay, nothing against Mike and Alan, they got paid eighteen dollars an hour to put that in, and they knew what they were doing, I've never done it, I'm telling you right now, I have no interest in it.
It's like me going and wiring up a box and wherever lifts it, I'm not electric.
I saw that, I saw that too.
Let's see, what is it? You wanna tell me this crap behind my back, let's throw it out to me.
No, we just saw it, he was gonna ask.
No, and I got told by somebody else, oh, they're gonna jump you about that electric bill.
I don't know, I just saw it to me.
They've done that, he'd done electric for me for a long time. The breaker was bad from the flood, and we took the pump out, it broke a tooth off. I had to get a new breaker. I called Martin, he got the part, he put it in, I didn't have to mess with it.
Oh, the breaker's contacted him there.
Three twenty-nine.
He didn't show me the list.
It's contractors issue.
It's got a breaker in on it. It's got a breaker in on it. I'll throw this out, if you don't like the way I'm doing it, then you fire me, that's fine and dandy, because I'm sick of the drama. I'm sick of the drama.
What drama?
Your drama. You're bullying everybody around, this crap that went on tonight, this meeting was BS. Had to run the engineer over the coals. Being professional, cussing Mike, pushing bullshit. This is BS.
No, it ain't.
You're BS, I'm sick of the whole deal. I'm telling you, I'm to my head with it. If you don't like the way I'm doing it, you move me on, otherwise, you let me do my job.
We've given you plenty of opportunity to do your job.
I'm doing my job, what's not getting done?
I asked you what your job description was, then you just, you blow it up.
What do you want me to tell you? What do you want me to tell you?
What your job description is?
It's the friggin' maintain. I take care, I help run the lift stations, make sure the water line's going, I can go fix a water leak, I could do it all day today. But to go in and tap sixteen water mains, that ain't my job. We don't tap them. Never have, we don't maintain them, just like that farm shop deal. That wasn't ours, it's a service line. We did it, wasn't ours to do. We run on a short crew. It's never been laid out to me what an exact job description is, so there, that's all I have for it. I run around, make sure the city runs on a day-to-day basis. And that takes a lot of time running around. I go take their water samples, I go check on this, I go check on that, we take the phone calls, we haul rock. That's making sure things are still rolling. If you want me to go tap water mains, that's, that's what I'll be doing, there won't be time for any of the other stuff. And I'm just telling you, I have no interest in it. What's that, you're gonna mumble?
I think I'm gonna do something else.
What are you gonna do?
I think I'm gonna mumble.
You were mumbling, you talking to the table? This whole board went to squat. There's about three people on here that I have respect for that'll stand up and do something. It's all against you guys, against us.
Ty, you don't need to be in person, okay?
It, it's already personal, Rick. And I've got no thing that against you, I think it's great. I don't either. But the people tell me that I need to go do it, and they don't have a clue either, I don't.
Okay, I didn't know it.
And I, I have no problem, you know, the whole deal is, the board's got away from this whole deal, we're, we're all supposed to be on the same page. It's all went the other way.
Speaking of being on the same page, I hand you a typed letter.
Got it.
Yeah, what else did you do?
What do you want me to do with the list?
What did you do on that?
Three of the four things were done.
Yeah, and about thirty months after I pulled out of the drive, you had a phone call up here, because I got my ass ate from somebody you said typed it that didn't.
That's not true, Eric.
I called him and asked him if they typed it. Because it was official letter.
Official letter.
So it looked like.
I can't type a letter in my own cell.
It's got the letter heads, I called and asked.
Which department you wanna be on, you wanna be on city maintenance, you wanna be in there, in the city department, detective?
What's that have to do with anything here?
Well, you was wasting your time trying to see who typed it.
Or call and say you typed it up, see what was said, because there's all this BS going on, turning everybody's back. And she claims it's not BS.
See, I know what you're talking about, guys.
Yeah, I don't know either.
I don't know about no letter you're talking about, Ty.
He, he handed delivered me a letter with four things he wanted done, from the mayor. Three of the fours already done, they were done when he gave me the letter.
And what were on that, Ty?
Spray the curbs, it'd been done a week before he gave me the letter. One was, uh, what, the hole? Well, that wasn't one of the four, one of them was the cable, if he wants me to reinstall the cable. How do you want me to reinstall the cable, the poster junk? There's no money in the park fund, that's where the money would have to come from to fix that. I mean, to pull it up, but there's nothing to pull it to. So that's the, one of the four things that did get done. I don't remember what the other three were, sweep around the streets was one of them, sweep around the curbs, sweep around the courthouse is what it said exactly. I did that in May.
But why are the damn culverts still full, why's all the little ditches full of crap?
We hand scooped all those up there. Every one of them, we hand scooped them, now whatever blew them in after, I don't know. But we all four went up there with shovels and a skidler, hand scooped all those gutters out up there. I thought they was the best they'd ever looked.
Ty, what about, I think years ago, maybe Mike remembers, did the fire department, don't they power wars the streets like that, the gutters and stuff?
We did that like the first year I was here, and it washed them out so bad, we had to put material back in them.
I don't know if that helped somewhat or not.
Well, we hand scooped them all.
So in other words, you don't like me handing you lists, you like to do.
No, that's fine, you can hand me lists. I'm trying to micromanage it.
After I was elected, I asked for the curb and the stripes we painted. And that's, that hasn't been done yet.
Well, we quit the stripes on hold because of the street work. We did do that, I will stand up for him on that.
That's where I always at on that.
That's what we, we did talk last month about.
So what am I elected for then, Ty, if it's not to?
Far hydrate all the.
To what, stand over our shoulder? Ty, if I stood over your shoulder, you'd know it, I've not stood over your shoulder. I've asked you to do your job and I've, I've stayed with it. If you don't like the way I do it, there's the damn door. I'm telling you that, if you don't like the way I do it, then we're gonna impasse, you're the big boy, you figure out what you wanna do. My job's going fine, the city is running. Okay? If you've got something, there once in a while, that's fine, but I don't think the meeting's a place for you to come up and make mockeries of all of us.
Mockery?
Yeah, mockery.
Yeah, how so, Ty?
This is mockery, last month, the bathrooms ain't been cleaned all year, they had been. Yes, they had been, and I was gonna argue it.
Maybe once.
And tell him the trashcans hadn't been picked up, and they had been, and he got jumped about it after because he didn't know his backstreet. That's making mockery in front of everybody here, everybody watches that, if you wanted something done, you could've come down and said something, hey. You know, it's all on the delivery, just like Mark Ross.
Who do you think jumps us, Ty?
All on the delivery, you think they don't jump me? All on the delivery, just say, hey, hey, could you run out and check the trashcans, or hey, maybe you'll check the park, it, it might be getting with.
You're out of place, Ty, I don't wanna tell you right now you're out of place.
I don't care.
So Ty, do you want us to call you directly, or tell the girls to get on to you?
You can do either way. But I'm saying, right here instead of the meeting's not the place to do it. If you got a little thing to do, you bring it down and I'll go take care of it. You can drop it off here, I'll go take care of it. But don't bring all this crap to the meeting and throw me under the bus and all this stuff, it's, to my opinion, it's piddly. I could shut the park bathroom, lock the door, and the city would run fine. If we don't get that water main fixed, and there's gonna be all them houses out of water, then you got problems. If our water samples fail, because we've got bad water or something, then the city runs down. And our pumps been running, like I said earlier, they've been running twenty-three, twenty-four hours a day, they've monitored them pretty close. If they quit, we don't have any spares. Then you're gonna start shutting people off because the water tower's gonna drain. Lift stations, same deal, they have no spare pumps. If that pump goes out down there, I'll have to go pull one from the school to bring in and make sure it's going.
So, my question is, when I have a complaint, do you want me to call you directly?
That's fine.
Are you gonna be calling the girl on?
Drop it off up here, I don't care.
I will call you directly then.
That sounds great.
You should get in there and call him.
Oh, I'll find him if I don't. He knows all the working over, I'm not facial.
That's all I got, I'm just. Long day, it's all been going around.
It needs to be thrown out.
It's been going around. All this jumble mumble about this BS and everybody's back. It's all, it's all a bit of it.
Anything behind your back, I won't say to your face.
But the fact is, you say it behind my back.
And I say it to your face too.
How about the deal, I'm hitting Mike about that. Tool that I told you it costs so much money. I didn't tell you it costs so much money, I don't have to say cost. I just told you we didn't have the tool.
You told me you wasn't gonna do it because the tool, we didn't have the tool and it cost money.
That's what I said.
So then I called a gentleman that had actually done it a business.
You're missing the deal.
No, you're missing the deal.
No, I'm not.
Yes, you are, I'm trying to save the city money, because you don't wanna do something.
It ain't nothing doing, I don't know how to do it.
There's no time like the present to learn, Ty.
Fine, that's what you want done, don't call me with all the other stuff, it'll be tapping water.
You're still gonna have to keep all your work going.
That's what I'm telling you. You guys want it all done in a, in a eight-hour, seven-hour, eight-hour day, and you just don't fly, so. Maybe they need to get there at seven, it's a lot, it's starting a little bit early. Fine, we're there, but.
Well, we gotta get that water main fixed somehow, so whatever it takes.
It needs fixed. And you tell her, I'm just telling you, I haven't never done it, it's gonna take me a while to do it, so if you want me to do it, it's not gonna be done in two weeks, I can promise you, because I'm not that fast on the backhoe, I can dig a leak out, I can dig some of that stuff up, but it's gonna take a while to dig all those water mains up and switch them over.
How much time you estimating?
I couldn't tell you, like Mike said, depends what you get into. If I hit lines and break it, then you gotta fix those, if I break the main, then you gotta fix that. I don't know, there, there's no good way to put a timeframe on it. Didn't even begin to say it. But it needs fixed.
Well, if it's, if it's a street, he's talking about Campbell Street, we might be better off right now, getting that done and letting him watch them maybe. Those three lines, is that what there's gonna be, Eric, on that one side?
Six houses, seven lots.
Seven lots, okay.
That's forty-two hundred dollars and six hundred dollars.
Yeah, but I thought you were talking thirty-six hundred, seven.
Yeah, that's six houses.
Six houses.
The water main runs clear up to Ken Mitchell's house, the new main.
So there's a lot more than.
So when you tap them, you gotta get.
Just on Campbell Street through six houses.
Yeah, roughly. And that line, that line spurs and goes east, so there's another one there you gotta add in.
So we're talking over ten grand on one lot?
The only, the only line that has to be tapped on Monticello would be the Barton house that just sold. The others are tied off, other places. The ambulance district comes down the hill. I would, I, I, I take that back, I would have to check the ambulance district to be sure. Does it come from the south? Does it come from that corner? Okay, so there would be the ambulance district and the Barton.
We gotta do something that should sound like a pre.
Yeah, we're ready to go now. What do you guys want to do?
I gotta claim something, I guess I'm gonna put up the.
There's no people that are on that new pipe, that's what I wanna do.
Mike, do you think you would ever have the time to help?
We don't wanna do it.
Do you think you have the time at all?
You know, if all I had to do is go over there and show them how to tap it a couple times, yeah, I can make time, but I'm getting into where I'm getting pretty hard on hauling sludge, so I'm gonna be, baseball's over with, so I don't have to worry so much about the ball fields, and I'm gonna be hauling sludge.
We didn't wanna worry about the ball field still.
Well, I'm, I'm not.
We don't wanna go do this last year.
I'm not gonna neglect them, that's not what I meant, I just meant I don't have to drag it every day and, you know, I mean, it needs to be drugged for the softball team so they can practice and stuff. And the kids that, the kids that wanna play on it from here to there, but it doesn't have to be manicured like it was, in my opinion. Now, if you want it manicured every day, you tell me that, but I was gonna drag it twice a week and keep it looking nice and sprayed up, but not every day.
Yeah, and be sprayed and mowed, yeah.
But, um, you know, I, I've got a good six weeks of sludge hauling too coming on that I, I'd like to beat to the end of August and September in case it starts turning off wet.
Well.
But I'm not saying that I can't help a little, you know, I, I, I'm not gonna be able to go over there and sit with them all day and dig and put.
My concern is, if Ty is that adamant not wanting to do it because he doesn't know how, he might do us more harm than good in the long run. Tearing up more water lines or some other flline or something. I don't know, we might be better off doing something else until you can figure out how to do it. That one Campbell Street, at least. Because if he gets in and tears up more stuff, not knowing what he's doing, we could be spending a lot of money. That's just my thought.
Once, once we get all this stuff hooked up, how, how, how often are we gonna have to do this after, after we get these lines that are new, that we're not using?
Those, those lines there were the last cast iron lines in town, and I, I mean, unless the city gets in the business of somebody that builds a new house or does something, I mean, I don't know where you're gonna put a new service at in town. As far as buying, you know, I mean, but the tapping tool's not that expensive, so, um, as far as new services, after this, you're probably not gonna see any of it.
Well, you're saying not that expensive, you said five hundred and buy a nice one?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, it's been years since I bought one, the one I got's twenty years old, Eric. I, I, I couldn't, I'm, I'm, I'm shooting from the hip. I, I can't imagine, I, I can show it to you and you can tell me what you think it's worth. You know what I mean? If, if it's, if it's five hundred dollars, I'd be surprised. Just because of what it consists of.
Well, like Ray said, I think we should get that Campbell Street fixed.
It's not just Campbell Street, is what you're saying.
I know, but right now.
Since they got some bad leaks every other month.
Can you fix just Campbell Street? Or do you gotta do the whole line if I?
When you hook it up, that's however you wanna do it, you've about gotta disconnect everybody off the old line, because otherwise it's still active. So.
There's a process, I mean, the process is, is the line's been sitting with water in it, it has to be flushed, has to have two consecutive days of backtease. They have to pass, as soon as they pass, you can go through and start connecting. At that time, you have to leave both line, lines live, because you can't get them all tied over in one day, obviously. So you hook one or two, or however many get done that day, and you shut their port off, or shut it off at the old main. As soon as you get done, you can shut the old main off, and then they're tied over, so I mean, it's.
But Campbell Street's the end of that spur, correct?
Yes.
So you gotta charge the whole line and do the whole system. Is that correct?
The new line. To cut it over, yeah.
The new line.
Yeah.
I mean, how many houses are we talking?
Both Campbell Street, the ambulance district, and Parton's.
My ambulance street won't be up there. The ambulance district will, make those up the south. Their waters.
So, does that take in Bill Laney and all those down that way?
Yep, yep.
So you'd run a whole new line to their house?
No, there's a new, there's a new line later.
Reconnect to the old line.
No, not the service line.
No, I have to dig, that's what I'm saying, you gotta dig up the old main, find their water line, dig up the new main, you've gotta disconnect their old one, shut that off because you can't, it's gonna be live, hook it over to their new one. I mean, in a nutshell, yeah, it sounds real simple, but you gotta find it without tearing it up, find both mains, hook there to corp on, like the one today, we found one today on accident. And there's a rust off, it just snaps right off the main. So we had to patch our hole, and we had to re-tap it just to get it back in there. But I mean, there's, there's a lot of, it's gonna be a lot of tedious digging, that's what I'm telling you. It's not a fact of want to or a fact of how to, I've never done it, that's what I'm telling you. And you get into things like that, if you want me to go learn on it, I'll go, but you're gonna give me some time, because it's, it's, it won't be fast, I can promise you. Because I'm not planning, I don't, I don't like fixing water leak anymore than next gap. You start popping those service lines out, and every time you shut people's water off, that just makes it even more and more going, and then you gotta put boilers on and all that good stuff.
It's all gonna be done regardless of what you do or somebody else does.
They tap them live, though. They don't break nothing, you don't have to put boilers on.
So if we charge that line and, and did all the preparation work to get it up and running and clean water in there and good to go, this other fellow, the guy that does it for a living, can do one at a time?
Yeah, they have to be.
No problem?
Yeah.
But we can't?
No, we can't, we do it the same, same way. We would do.
We could dig up and tap one house at a time.
Yeah, that's how you have to do it, yeah.
Or we can pay somebody else big bucks to do it because we don't want to.
It ain't nothing to do with want to.
You just pretty well said that, Ty.
First of all, I had no interest because I don't know what.
For micro-managing, there's not been any.
There's been tons of it. But that's fine. What are you on this water line?
Fix it. I say give it a whirl and see where we're at, we'll just have to give you some leeway on this other stuff. I mean, if something comes up, you gotta go take care of, that's one thing. And if, if we gotta bring somebody in to help do part of them, then that's what we'll do.
And also.
We gotta get it, we gotta get it fixed.
Oh, it's gotta be fixed.
And also, I, I have a note here, smoke test, we probably need to do that while Ross is still here, do we? Eric, do you think?
I.
How important is that we need to do though?
You could do a smoke test on the laterals, wouldn't you? And we'd have no law and order to make them do it. So they can let their stuff leave as they want to.
No, no, we have an order.
You have an order to.
Yes, for a, for a smoke up there, yeah.
We have an ordinance that they can't have gutters and some pumps hooked up. We just can't go in and replace the lateral, make them replace their, it's theirs.
And they did the smoke testing and the city should have all the results of that sm- all, all's been done, it was years ago.
We went through, yeah, when they first started the deal, we went through and most of us caps outside, we fixed those, we gave letters, people had sun pumps, and we checked downspouts now. A lot of them, we probably didn't go back and check some pumps, see if they actually fixed them.
Smoke testing is like a every five, six year deal, needs to start over and it, the crew that did it had like ten guys and it took them three and a half months to do the entire town. So I mean, that's, pick a section each year and do.
When was the last time it was done?
Right, right before the project started.
Look in the Sentinel, it was in the Sentinel.
We have fresh, as far as anybody knows, fresh.
Yeah, he said they give, they put a letter out to certain people, but we've not went back and checked. Evidently not.
Well, the thing is, like, just like Ty said, the caps and stuff on the laterals of the yard, how many times did you mow your yard this year? Somebody hits that with a lawnmower and the cap goes off, we didn't, you know, I mean, those things happen, it's not any fault of theirs, it's not any fault of ours. That thing happens and now it's an issue. And we, we can't walk around to every house, so what they do is they section off for, section of wa- of sewer main, plug the manhole off, pump smoke in there and then it comes up in the yard, you walk over it, oh, somebody hit that with a lawnmower or it's broke or it's leaking or something and, we write it down, give them a letter, you have so many days to fix it, then they have to go back and check to see that they fixed it. So I mean, it's a time consuming process.
I say get that water main fixed and then we'll worry about smoke testing later.
Well, talk to Tucker, we're gonna put, be on the paper for everybody to remind him, cause a lot of people are gonna have to check them, I mean, just, you get the honest people to check them.
Yeah.
Especially we thought since when the sewer project's finished, we're gonna send out a lot more letters and like you said, put the notice in the Sentinel, it says, okay, now it's finished, now you can have all these things taken care of.
If you, if you start digging on that and it, and it's just a major headache and you can't get around the fact that it's crumbling under your feet, then we'll just have to go a different route. If we can dig it up and fix it, and save the city half of the money it's gonna cost to pay somebody else to do it, then that's the way we ought to go. That's my opinion. And you'll get some experience whether you like it or not, I know, I know I wouldn't, but. If you need any help, holler at me, I'll come help you dig.
Well, and I know Mike's good to help you Ty too.
Oh, yeah, Mike's, Mike's great with them, I can call him anytime.
Right, and I think that would be a good learning experience, you've got somebody right now to teach you, like Alan taught Mike.
And that, and that's, that's kinda what we forgot in Ty's defense, you know, he was supposed to have three or four years with Alan. I had fifteen good, good years with him.
For a couple of years.
He's done well for the shit we've dumped him in.
You know, so I mean.
I'll pat him on the back, I agree.
It was, it was green coming into the whole thing and, and I, that's why I feel obligated to help as much as I can, because the deal was, Alan was gonna try and pass on as much knowledge as he could till he was ready to retire. We didn't get that much time out of Alan. You know, I mean, that, there was other plans in there, it just, shit happens.
Now, I'm gonna go out here on a limb. And I'm gonna say this, and I'm gonna say it one time. You want more money, make yourself worth more money.
I didn't say I want more money, I want more money for my guys. I'm just, I'm, we're not, we're not.
Pay you what everybody else gets paid, contract. That's not the deal, Ty. Your maintenance, you, you're no different than I am when I come to your house, put in a break. And if you've got an issue with me,
I got an issue.
Then you come to me, the same as I will you from now on. Outside of this, outside of this meeting, if you want, we'll just, we'll have it out, whatever you want. I thought we did that one meeting before anybody was around. Before the cameras was there, all the department had to sit down at this table, do you remember that?
Yeah, and you wanted to turn everybody on air.
I didn't turn anybody on anybody. I said, if anybody's got any ill feelings, get it out, yell, scream, cuss, do whatever you gotta do. And I also said, we all gotta work together as an organization.
We do, exactly, I agree with that one hundred and twenty percent.
It doesn't feel like.
Exactly. I'm the same way, and whether we have a misunderstanding, I don't know, but that's the way I feel about it. I feel like it's my four guys and whoever else the employees versus the council, that's about how it plays out to us. You feel on pins and needles, cause you're always being contradicted about things and nothing's ever right and there's always something else to be, whatever, grunting about it, like, whatever you put in it. And yes, I know there's lots of things, there's always things in the city.
Welcome to the job.
Exactly, I'm just saying.
That's the job.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, back off a little bit, look at the things we've done, nobody sees the things you do.
The hell we don't, we see it. We see the fact that you went around, you filled most of the potholes and you quit and you still got material. We see that.
There ain't none down there.
Ain't none down there.
There's about a pocket down there, if that.
Well, there's still something there, Ty, and there's still potholes. That's a deal.
Yeah, there is.
Okay.
Where's the oil cat, have you got that on order, where's that?
It's sitting there, I told you that two months ago, they said they're holding for us, and as I've told you before.
Where's the asphalt mix?
Waiting on a phone call back from the office, I'm still a month away before we're ready to do anything. You're gonna have to wait for the heat to get off, because otherwise we're chasing these roads around just like we are now, they're gonna bleed. My plan is late August, not the whole month of September, hopefully. And then we're gonna roll on, we're gonna patch all the holes, we're gonna go through, we're gonna chip as many streets as we can chip and seal. And it won't take that long to chip and seal, cause you can fly through them.
There's a truck operating, running.
We're working on it, that's a bigger chore than meets the eye. And you don't want me to send it off and rack up a giant bill fixing it somewhere. I don't even know if you're getting to work on it, so, we're working on it. Okay.
Just because you tell me something, and I don't tell these guys, that's why I ask in front of these guys. Now, if that's micromanaging, I'm sorry. I'm not looking to drag you across no coals. I'm concerned that the weather has been dry, we're still at seventy-one percent. Not just for me wanting to jump the engineer so much, or any at all so much as it is, what do we do when we actually have a normal rainfall? What are we gonna do? And if that bothered you, then I'm sorry, Ty.
It just bothered me the way it went down, there's no profession at all to it.
Well, I'm not a professional politician, pardon me.
We spent a lot of money.
Need to be questioned, yeah.
And I'm not saying this is, no, I'd rather ask questions, that's fine, but like Mark said, trying to do it in a professional manner, this is a professional meeting, it's a public meeting. I'm, unless you got anything else for me.
So, Perry, do you recommend that you go ahead and get, get the tool in?
Yeah, of course, get the tool, get it done.
Go ahead and get a tool.
Have a wonderful evening, Ty.
Yep.
Hard act to follow. As Erica stated, we're at seventy-one percent, we're down fifty percent of what we were last month, at a hundred and twenty-five. Everything seems to be running fine down there. The only thing I had on my list was the light to go, which you already stated, Mark Ross is gonna look into that and we'll look into that. Unless you have anything for me? No questions? Thank you.
Help him all you can.
Thank you.
No cash? No checks?
Nothing.
I'm finished, ladies. Everybody who passes, traffic sign, the intersection or whatever.
I looked at it and before we heard from Monica, I thought a yield sign would be enough, but we would even, I don't know.
They're not gonna pay attention to speed, I'm, I'm actually thinking they're gonna pay attention to the real sign.
Well, at least if there's an accident, you can say, well, you were supposed to yield.
The same can be said for a stop sign. The same can be said for a stop sign.
And as I was driving around there, I found the worst sign, I never said anything, I just think for a small town, it'd be too rocky, so.
Renee, haven't they been asking for a sign over there for years? I mean, it seems like it comes up every couple of years that somebody from that part of the town comes up and wants a sign or wants a, remember, didn't, didn't you guys put the, what's it, the speed bump over there? Last year?
Roger's still here.
Yeah, yeah.
But she suggested a four-way stop, but I don't believe that's an answer.
No, I don't think that's an answer either.
And then take out the other two in front of Mike Fox's, the other three.
I could take it the one coming from the south. Why do you need a stop sign in a dead end street?
Yeah. Are you talking the east street, Broadway one? Yeah.
East street is in my current opinion.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. I, I usually think signs maybe aren't needed, but I'm thinking maybe you.
Well, I think, while we're discussing things, I think currently it's the police would drive around and make, put their presence more obvious, that would help. I hardly ever see a police on duty during the day.
I see this one.
Don't worry, I drive around every hour that I'm, you don't seem to set an alarm anywhere.
I said, you're the one I see.
And like that. But the rest of them, do you see on duty during the day, quarter of the day at? I know, and I was wrong to say, but I mean, if they would just drive around and maybe set some of these intersections, maybe that would happen.
And, like Ty said, maybe.
You know, stop somebody and say, hey, you're speeding.
Maybe this situation we need to address to Kelly himself, instead of talking to Mike's back. Like, provide.
Eat the benders.
Don't worry, that goes back to, if you want to stop people from speeding, then we need a radar gun. We have no means of stopping anybody to tell them that they're speeding. Besides just visual, you can't do face off with them.
Well, that's, that's true too, but I mean, you just set up some of these intersections, maybe they, they, maybe they've got radar.
Right, I agree with that. I personally think if you start writing speeding tickets, people will get the idea, we need to slow down. But in order to do that, you're gonna have to have a radar gun that meets criteria to do that.
What I'm saying is, if they just drive around and maybe set some of these intersections, that, that's causing a problem. There is a lot of traffic out there on that burglar. I mean, I, I just, I drove these streets for twenty years.
Yeah, there's a lot of traffic.
And on the track, and you gotta be on your toes.
Yeah. So what was your opinion of Perry?
I have no opinion.
Did you go look for it?
I looked at it. There's a lot of intersections in the lane. The one thing that sticks out in my mind is there is a daycare in there.
Yeah, I've heard they're out there, they're in the Dickson area.
No matter what, they're gonna be going past by there, because we'll, unless we're gonna put a stop sign right in front of Angie's.
Only thing of that, if you, if you bank it off of that, you're gonna have everyone, Tom, Dick and Harry in town saying, I have kids, I'm gonna stop sign at this intersection.
But there again, I go back, if the place where we're going, maybe the crowd. And maybe that could just, you know, I, I do. And I said you kind of can leave and then some end with me, I'm very early at time, but I don't need a highway control coming or going. And I always have a seatbelt on for that reason. I'll either meet one in the morning, that was the word you got, or the one who wants to backboard the nuts in and need them, wanna come home. I know that I'd better be running fifty-five, sixty mile an hour and my seatbelt on, if I'm not, he goes down. And I'm, I'm saying that the place would just be more busy.
So have you drive around town? You guys been into that intersection with the European?
Ron didn't know anything about it, though.
Oh, he wasn't here, that's right.
I didn't go look at it.
Oh, that's right. I mean, a yield sign, everybody knew.
Observation.
Yield sign probably didn't, I don't know about Scott. Yeah, I'm thinking, yield. What are you thinking?
You spend the money on a yield sign, just put a stop sign on it.
Well, I just think that if there's an accident, you can say, well, you had the yield sign, you should have yielded. I don't really care if stop sign, yield sign, but I'm.
I don't know why, we maybe should have put the stop sign down there from Julie Smith's house instead of where we booked them. Crossing Mike Fox's, cause there's one, the one that ends on each side of that street, that's Camp, South Campbell.
I'd take that one up there at Mike Fox's, put down there, put it over there.
That's what I'm saying, there where we had the other two stop signs now.
Put it down there, boy.
I don't know.
That's what I'd do.
We'd really just shake them all up in the city, wouldn't we? Pull some up and put them somewhere else.
I, I think that's one that's somewhat, a lot of people tell me they've been running this and didn't even realize it was there.
I don't think a stop sign'll bother the folks that are paying attention to what they're doing, it's the ones that don't.
But I think, we didn't put one coming out that grade, because it was the grade, but I don't think it's that bad of a grade there by Julie's to do it.
I put it on down there, take that one, there, Schroders on Broadway.
There's three there, between Schroders and Mike Fox's, that end along the south side of it, on the north side of the street.
Take them two and move down from that direction.
Do you have any opinion on that?
I don't really see any cross signs over the area, or a yield sign, that's just my opinion.
What about if we moved one to Fox's, two to corporate from Schumann, make it three up there, a big four way up there.
Well, how far is Julie from Schumann? We, we're talking Schumann?
A block, or two blocks.
Two blocks.
And how far is it down to the junction then, from the, this new stop place?
From where?
Two more blocks?
To the county line road?
Yeah.
Whatever it's called for some reason.
Two, three.
Well, there's really no crossroads.
So, yeah, that's where I'm getting at, they gotta slow down there, right? Gotta make a turn one way or the other. So then halfway back, your stop sign would be more effective.
But if that intersection that McCarty's was having an issue with, I think. I personally thought a yield sign open is all I think, but on that particular location.
I don't see any for a stop sign.
Yeah.
You know, the yield, let's see how that works.
We might have a yield one already extra down there.
Maybe Glenn Merkel put a gate up.
And they might have one they can pull someone to.
Yield, go east and west and go for corrections, is what I'm saying.
No, in front of Schroders. In front of Mr. Hunsheimer.
Hunsheimer, coming up and shoot, I mean, I say, oh.
I was thinking of coming up Broadway.
Headed west.
Heading west.
I was thinking of going to Mr. Hunsheimer.
Mr. Hunsheimer. Stomping the traffic, just coming down the east.
Around that curve. County road around the curve.
So is the westbound traffic that is, is causing the problem? Or the eastbound traffic?
I was thinking that's what Monica was talking about, them picking the gravel at the farm shop and then going past Millers and and the trials, and shooting up that hill.
So were McCarty's asking to have, when you're coming from the east, pass Millers and there, and you get up Broadway, have a sign there?
That's what I was thinking.
As yield is where you're talking about.
That's what I was thinking.
I just wanted to get it straight, because last time we went on the street, I didn't get that at all.
So he's thinking, McCarty's was thinking one by, their street, their, and then.
Is their street, it goes past Millers, that's your thing, right? And that comes up to be, or Broadway, or no, Schumann goes the other way.
Yeah, Schumann's this way and Broadway's coming out.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
See, I thought you was talking the other street, from Hunsheimer's. Cause otherwise you're gonna have them within a block or two to do that, right?
Yeah.
See, the other way, you're not still that easy to block part.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Originally asked to stop both of them.
Do what?
Originally they asked to stop both of them.
He did-
Swat it.
No, I think- No, maybe he just asked for something there.
A stop sign.
Monster's one of them.
Right.
Yeah. Four-way would be good.
I think it's, now you do it every intersection of the town. We used to have one four-way. We do run four-way.
Yeah, now you can't say four-way.
Yeah, see, that's in the main, people still, but almost a four-way, yes.
Yeah.
I'm not saying you-
People run it so much, they don't even pay attention.
If they're a yield, they can take their stuff.
But you need to look at it.
I'm in the favor of a yield.
Yield to Shoemake off of Broadway?
Yield on Broadway. You off Broadway, a yield.
And when you say Broadway, do you mean, you're gonna go across the west?
Corner of Broadway and Shoemake right there.
God's saying yield coming up, that one inches out.
So is the yield sign missing right here?
Let's take a closer look.
I like you, I'm not gonna go, maybe you do two.
They were just talking about one here.
Otherwise, you're gonna have a stop sign.
Yeah, because you're gonna stop here, return.
Yeah, because up there you're turning. It's just to keep these people here from running into somebody that's coming, that's coming on Broadway.
That's what I wanted to go on.
Oh, that's what she wants going.
I'd do what I'd say, and that direction, that west.
That just keeps these people, so they'll yield.
Look at one, two, three, four blocks before they have to slow down for that turn there.
There's a stop sign like you, two or three.
There's a stop sign in here someplace.
Like that. On southeast.
Yeah, I think that's, that's the one that's there now.
Street east of Mike Fox's, the street east of Campbell's, South Campbell's.
Yeah, southeast.
Yeah.
How fast can they get going in this distance?
Yeah, see, there's only a block.
Into a, into a stop sign?
I'd see, take that stop sign now, I know what it is.
Shoot them.
Maybe you need to go over there and-
Stop all of them, you got a list? Huh? You got a list? Well, the first one through there at higher rate too, so we'll just start with that one. Tires. Drivers.
I've always thought, I'm just basing it on privacy.
I, I can't see putting a yield in front of a stop sign. So you do something with the stop sign or the yield's ineffective? Because you got a stop sign coming.
Possible. What was your favorite stop? That location? You want to go second?
Oh, you, I thought you said anybody's saying, he wasn't making a motion.
He wants, he, he wants to shoot.
Or do you all need to go over there and look at it here? I mean, it's like, if you're talking about-
Can we take the other one out and push the stop sign though?
Move it?
Yeah.
Move it back one block? It's up to you. Would that be effective?
I mean, make a motion, right, what are you saying?
Move the one on E Street back one block to the east?
To, uh...
Shoemake?
Yeah. Take Fox's out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Take the one off southeast and put on Shoemake.
Because there's a stop sign here and you want to put a yield sign here going the same direction.
See, I wouldn't want to put a yield sign there, I just want to put it in front of Bill Hunziker's house.
Where's that at?
Which is on Shoemake. Shoemake's in the area.
Shoemake and Broadway.
Just like you're coming off the county in front of Alice Gibson Boudreaux's house. On the county road, that height, that street comes up and it curves and comes to Bill Hunziker's corner. That's where I think you need a yield sign.
So you're talking about, from that corner, like yield?
Yes.
Keep them-
Slow them down so they can check, check as the traffic comes up.
That would work.
I'll second that motion.
I didn't make a motion.
I was just going to say.
I don't think I got that motion.
Stop sign and put up a yield sign.
So you, you're gonna be saying by here on Broadway, put on yield stuff?
And-
Make a motion for the yield sign on Shoemake.
Market measure that's a great street.
Facing to the south.
Facing south.
Facing the yield. A yield sign on Shoemake.
Facing the traffic from the people.
North south.
Traffic coming on the south, going north.
Always changes, doesn't work.
Everybody's in favor of that.
That's fact.
Did somebody second?
Uh, no.
No, I'll second that motion.
Renee?
So where's it going?
Cora Shoemake and Broadway facing south.
Don't ask any more questions.
Check the market tomorrow.
I think.
Where the X on the ground is.
And it's a stop sign?
Are you recording this?
Yes, it's, there's twenty people watching right now. Twenty, twenty people watching right now.
Yeah, it's entertainment, have you seen what's been going on?
I would just like to point out that it's almost eleven o'clock.
Oh, my. Anybody have any calls? It's eleven o'clock.
It's ten forty, ten forty.
As far as people dictating what they really want to do for us, that would not be tolerated in any other aspect or any other color. That is something that needs to be kept in mind. And I am not very happy about the way it went. I've not thought of finding anybody to back, I've not tried to stir any crap between anybody. And if I have, it's been misconstrued. I wouldn't say anything to anybody's face, I wouldn't say anywhere else.
Well, close.
Now, anybody think that I'm maybe in the wrong? What's your opinion, please?
I think this is-
Concerns about what happened with that?
I have concerns. I think this is personnel matters and probably falls under a closed meeting discussion and probably shouldn't be having that discussion in a public meeting, just saying.
I'm saying, calm down, we're not discussing anything. We're not discussing anybody's personnel. We're not discussing anybody's performance, we're not discussing any of that.
So what are you wanting to know then, Eric? Because if you want us to respond to what you just asked us, that is personnel, you are the mayor. That needs to be done in closed session. Am I right?
I asked you if there was anything that I did or said that would make you concerned.
I saw, I saw two people that were angry, arguing with each other, so.
That's the only comment I'm gonna make. I-
I think we all have to learn, Eric. And Eric's a little more boisterous than we're all used to, you know, than David was. And I think we all have to adjust to that.
It's black and too long.
We're not gonna address that at the moment.
Yeah, we're not gonna do that.
All right, they have to have the motion for German.
I will make that motion.
If you are one of the heat gobs of people who tuned into this livestream, thank you for watching and being involved in local government. I'm Michael Mendez for NMONews.net and I'm gonna sign off for now.